Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We didn't hear our theme music playing. However, hopefully at home you did, and that could mean only one thing. It is time for the Tuesday, June 3rd, 2008 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. The city clerk, we call the roll.
Council members, Njariyan.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. We hear the first item.
First item would be the flag salute.
And that would be?
Council member Weaver.
Mr. Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. Our flag salute. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation. The month of June marks not only the beginning of the summer season, but also the culmination of over a decade of education, and in some cases even hard work and self-discipline for a community's wonderful graduating classes. As the gates of our academic institutions swing open to allow the coming generations to spread their wings, I'd like to dedicate this evening's invocation to them, their parents, and their educators. Ralph Waldo M. Emerson wrote in one of his essays, and a line which I often like to quote, that, "Do not go where the path may lead; go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." Let us pray that our graduating class takes heed of this advice, and in ever more rapidly changing world they look for new ways to solve the problems of old. Let us pray that they do not make the same mistakes as their predecessors. Let us also give thanks to the wonderful parents and teachers and administrators with whom we as a city have been blessed. Our schools under denizens are truly a jewel in our city's crown and deserve our praise and gratitude. We also pray for those young men and women who after graduating, either enlisted or plan to enlist in armed services, and are currently deployed. We pray for peace and compassion today and always. Amen.
Mr. Kusakian, could we have your report, please?
Agenda for the June 3rd, 2008 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, May 29th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. Thank you very much. Could we have the first item or the next item?
Item number three, Mr. Mayor's Presentation on Appointments. And before I read 3A, if there's anyone watching this evening who still has not voted, I'd like to remind them to go out and vote. Polls will be open until 8:00 PM.
Thanks.
And 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meeting of June 10th, 2008.
We will go to Mr. McFaul.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman, and members of council. For next week, June 10th, on the Housing Authority, there actually will be no specific action items, nor on the Redevelopment Agency. There will be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority to listen and address a report from the Director of Development and Housing regarding the city's use of community development block trans funds, administrative funds for the 2008-2009 administrative budget. Unlike the past several weeks, there at this point in time will not be a budget study session in the morning, but we will go to the city council meeting at 6 o'clock. A few items. First, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be bringing a report to council for consideration on providing contributing funds to the July 4th fireworks program with the Crescent Valley Fireworks Association. Secondly, the Director of Human Resources will be submitting two ordinance items that deal with supplemental benefits and salary ordinance for a variety of different employee associations in accordance with their Memorandums of Understanding. And then the Director of Parks and Recreation will be submitting, excuse me, the Director of Public Works will be submitting a banner request from the Glendale Sunshine Rotary Club. And then finally will be the public hearing for the proposed City Glendale Budget for Fiscal Year 2008 and 2009.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Let's have the next item.
3B is a Presentation of MTA Pricing Plan.
And who are we going to hear from?
Just give an intro.
Let me turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Njariyan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several months ago, Mr. Yusefian asked for some information on the congestion pricing plan by the MTA. At that point, the MTA had received a positive from the federal government in regard to their application for congestion pricing. And it involves several different methods of achieving the result of congestion pricing, pricing varying the price that an individual would pay to drive on a freeway depending on the current load of the freeway. And I've asked several of my friends from the MTA. Your name was?
My name is Hassan Hamida.
Hassan.
I'm the Congestion Pricing Project Manager.
And if you don't mind, I'll just turn it over to him.
I will. Let me just thank you, welcome. And I just wanted to ask you, just so I can sort of plan things out here, approximately how long is your presentation?
It's going to be 10 minutes, and we can open it for any questions that you may have at the end.
All right.
And thank you so much for the opportunity. And I'm joined today by Susan Gilmore. She's the Director of Constituent Program Management, and will be able to answer any questions that you may have. Next, please. Congestion pricing. What is congestion pricing, or also called value pricing? It's a travel demand management strategy that uses the power of the market to reduce the delays associated with traffic congestion. And it works better when, in combination with other travel demand management strategies such as parking, as well transit and telecommuting. What we're willing to do with congestion pricing is to shift the demand from peak periods to off-peak periods for those discretionary trips, as well as to shifts, or induce shifts, from private vehicles to transit modes and van pulls. By this, we're providing more choices to our commuters. Next, please.
We are currently developing a congestion pricing operating plan for the next 12 months. And for this purpose, we have contracted the PB Americas and a team of subcontractors. As director for the Board, in Phase 1, we'll be looking at the alternative congestion pricing options that we could implement in Los Angeles County, including on freeway corridors. On Phase 2, we will be developing a detailed operating plan for each one of the three alternatives that the Board recommends for further analysis. With the USDOT grant that we'll discuss briefly, the first alternative includes three hot lane corridors in the San Gabriel Valley, as well as in the south coast area, 110 Harbor Transitway.
And hot is?
High occupancy toll lanes. What we are suggesting is, due to the congestion levels in the diamond lanes or carpool lanes, is to improve the efficiency and the carrying capacity of those lanes by converting the high occupancy vehicle lanes into high occupancy toll lanes, according to which we will allow vehicles not meeting the minimum passenger occupancy requirements to access the facility for a fee. So we will be managing more effectively the demand and use available resources with the limited freeway capacity. The Board Director has to include revenue projections, as well as the legislative requirements, technical requirements, and the mobility impacts and environmental impacts of any congestion pricing projects to be implemented or suggested for implementation. For this purpose, PB Americas will be assisting us in doing the technical analysis, and extensive market research, and public outreach campaign, for which we'll be seeking your inputs. Next, please. The Congestion Reduction Demonstration Initiative for which we applied back in December 31st to the United States Department of Transportation is for a one-year demonstration program for those hot lane corridors, and includes 85 lane miles. 28 lane miles are those on the I-10 El Monte Transitway between the 605 Interstate to Alameda Street near Union Station, 24 lane miles on the I-210 from the I-605 going west to State Route 131. And the hot lanes along the 110 Interstate will be from the Artisha Center all the way to Adam Streets in downtown Los Angeles. And for this, we haven't received any funds, but should financing become available, we will have to implement this project as well per the terms of the USDOT agreement. Next. This initiative, it's an overall and comprehensive initiative that integrates pricing transit as well as technology. The tolls will vary by the time of the day, passenger occupancy, and the level of traffic congestion. Those tolls will be charged electronically, so we don't expect, and we are not allowed by federal law or state law to have any toll gates or booths. Interoperability with other toll lane projects in California is a must. And the objective is to maintain reliable speeds ranging between 45 to 50 miles per hour, as opposed to the 30 miles per hour that we're experiencing these days, and the 14 miles per hour that we're projecting in the year 2030. It includes the purchase of buses, as well as improvements in transit service along those corridors, including park and ride facilities. On April 25th, 2008, and after the Board members approved the execution of an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the USDOT, the USDOT announced a grant award of $213.6 million to fund our congestion reduction initiative. This is the largest grant that was awarded to any other metropolitan area in the United States. However, receiving these grants is contingent on receiving the legislative authority from our state legislatures by October 15th, 2008, for implementing these projects. And another term is to implement the high occupancy toll lanes and to be in revenue operation no later than December 31st, 2010. Next, please. And this is what it looks, and what we're looking at is at Items 1, 2, and 3, which are part of the MOU with the USDOT, with Items 1 and 2 and the San Gabriel Valley along the 210 and the 10 interstates being the ones to be converted in the initial phase by 2010, December 31st, to receive the funds. Next, please. For this purpose, we understand that technical research is going to be an important element, as well as public outreach. So we have assembled a team of technical advisors as part of a technical advisory group. And we'll also have more specific tasks that will be conducted by corridor advisory groups, which will include also focus groups that will be supervising the surveys. And we'll be producing educational materials, such as our website, videos, fact sheets, and editorials. And we have left for your further consideration a fact sheet and frequently asked questions that talks about congestion pricing and the details of our project. And more information is found, could also be found in our website. We're also doing more specific corridor groups, and starting with the I-10 and 210 hot lanes. Next, please. And this is not a new term. It has been implemented elsewhere in the United States. And so far, there's six states with eight projects, two of them in California, being San Diego and Orange County, that they have experimented with high occupancy toll lanes. And all of them have been successful. Some of them have been in operation more than 10 years. And there's over 70 projects that are currently under study in other parts of the United States. The New Jersey Turnpike and those tollways on the east coast are not hot lanes, but now they do have tolls that vary by peak, off-peak, and by the type of vehicle. Next, please. Some of the project results are very encouraging. We have here the San Diego. There's an average travel time saving of 20 minutes per trip compared to the general purpose lane. And this is a stretch of eight miles only. It resulted in adding new transit service along the corridors with fact express routes. And the bus riders, they represent about 10% of the riders along the express lanes. And the toll revenues are used to find the production of ongoing bus service. There is support of the I-15 commuters using the hot lanes, as well as the general purpose lanes. And there has been increase in the throughput through these facilities because of these travel demand management strategies. And San Diego is looking now into a regional network that will cover 178 lane miles of high occupancy toll lanes in the long-term range plan. Next, please. Another one is Orange County. The difference here is that they added four new lanes on a stretch of 10 miles with only one ingress and one ingress point. And the toll schedule is set by the time of the day. And it includes also an inflation factor. And they would want to maintain a depth service ratio of 1.3 because this started as a private sector project. And the Orange County Transportation Authority bought it back in 2003 at the cost of $207 million. This project is worth now $600 million. The toll range rates range from $1.2 to $10 on the peak period. And the three carpools are free of charge except certain periods of the peak period going eastbound. Some of the benefits of this project is to maximize the vehicle throughput per lane mile per hour. As you see in that graph below, 800 vehicles per lane mile per hour during the congested conditions. But because you are managing the demand more effectively, you are able to accommodate, double that number of vehicles moving at higher speeds of about 45 miles per hour. There is a net revenue of, you know, there's a revenue of $44 million in the last year. 24 of those are used for operating expenses. And the net revenue are used for transit improvements along the corridor. I have a couple of more examples before concluding. And that will be, next, please. In South Lake City. And here what they did is the longest hot lane is about 38 miles long. However, the pricing doesn't vary by the time of the day. It's a monthly fee of $50 that is assessed for those facilities. And as you see in the lower graph there, there is, whenever there is an improvement on the hot lane, there is an improvement on the general purpose lane, and vice versa. So speeds on the hot lanes are well maintained over the threshold of 45 miles per hour, where maximum vehicle throughput is achieved because of this travel demand management strategy. There's an average travel time savings of 10 minutes as well per direction. Next, please. Minnesota. And that was another successful project that started operation in 2006. And here, I wanted to show you some of the results regarding low income. Because congestion pricing also addresses or mitigates the impact of low-income groups and provides choices to everyone. For the particular survey that was done regarding this hot lane project, 55% of the residents of Minneapolis that are low-income have used this facility. And 64% of low-income commuters, they do support having the hot lanes. Why? Because it does indeed provide faster transit and carpool alternatives. New express bus service. And as a statistic, we have bus ridership increased or represent about 40% of the passenger throughput of the express lanes. And this is something that we would like to replicate in our corridors as well. An unintended consequence of this project was improved in safety, with a reduction of 12% in the number of accidents compared to prior years. As well, this is an operational treatment that they went through. Initially, it was a 24/7 operation, 24 hours a day, every day of the week. And they found that this was not working for them, so they limited the operation only during the peak periods. Next, please. So in summary, what we're recommending here is a one-year demonstration project that will allow us to receive $213.6 million in federal transit money. The congestion projects that have been implemented elsewhere in the United States have been successful. And that's something that is encouraging, and we need to try here in Los Angeles. And the Los Angeles region is different from all other regions in the country because it has the worst congestion, as well as the worst air quality. So innovative approaches such as congestion pricing are needed. And for this to be successful, we will need to conduct extensive technical analysis and public outreach, which is already underway. And for this purpose, PB Americas is assisting us and its team of subcontractors in doing this task. And we'll be contacting you to seek your input. And also, we will be, as Metro, seeking your input for our project.
Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, he did that all in one breath, by the way. You're not related to our city attorney, are you?
No.
Okay. Do we have some comments, Mr. Yusefian?
Not comments, actually, questions. I'm trying to understand it. And I understand, I went to, I used to be a representative of SCAG, so I understand all your lingo. I'm just trying to translate that in plain English so the folks can understand. So what this project is, basically, you're taking HOV lanes, which are for people who are two or more. You're not adding any new lanes, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You're just taking the existing HOV lanes, and you're basically charging for people per mile to drive on the HOV lane. Now, if, my understanding of this concept is, at one point, whether there's two people in the car, one person in the car, you're still paying if you're in that lane in that particular time. Am I correct?
That is correct. And the concept of operation is still being developed because we have, for example, the I-10, it allows, or the minimum passenger occupancy during peak periods is three plus. On the other corridors, it's two plus. So we're developing the concept of operations, but you're correct.
And is, am I correct? That is like a dollar a mile?
No, that's not correct because at this point, we haven't got into that specific detail of how much the toll.
So what is, what is it in some of these other places?
For, in the case of Orange County, it could reach $10 per trip during the peak period.
$10 for how many miles?
Over there, they have 10 miles.
Okay, so $10 for 10 miles. Okay. So let me tell you where I stand. I've been a taxpayer in this city, this state. And I paid a lot of money in taxes, and many people have too. Those taxes have been used by the state of California to build all these highways. Now we go out there to get money from the federal government not to add more lanes to reduce congestion, which, by the way, everything that has been surveyed says that's what we want. SCAG survey shows that's what we need. But what we're going to do, we're going to just take the same exact lane. Now we're going to charge more for it, so fewer people can use it. So this way, we can increase the amount of the speed so we could comply with the federal regulations so we can get more grants. Did I get that right?
Not exactly. If I may comment on that. What we're observing here, that what the HOV lane or the carpool lane was a successful investment that Los Angeles County undertook here. But it has been victim of its own success because of the high demand. So at this point, carpoolers are not getting the benefit of their carpooling decision, which is a better travel time as opposed or compared to the general purpose lanes.
Because you've got more carpoolers in those carpool lanes.
That's correct. So we are trying to more effectively manage that capacity by managing the demand that is available to us. So we're providing more choices. We're providing, you know, as part of this grant, we'll be purchasing 63 buses. We will be improving park and ride facilities, such that we can induce that shift and give people more choices to commute and reach their destinations. And one thing that we want to achieve from this is transit travel time reliability. If people have the choice to get from point A to point B through transit, and with gas prices going up, and we have seen this going in Los Angeles, as well in the rest of the country, they would like to have that reliable choice. That choice would be transit or van pooling. Will still having the choice to carpool, and could be the case that even with carpooling, they may not be required to pay at all.
My worry is that your toll or hot, in my opinion, it's very hot, spicy, lane is going, not going to go up very good because this is not Minnesota. There's not a lot of mass transit. This is California. So what's going to happen is a lot of people are not going to use that. Consequently, the other four lanes or other three lanes are going to be very congested. People are not going to be able to move through that congestion. Guess where all this traffic's going to end up? In the streets. People are going to start driving through streets. And that's what's going to happen. And so all that congestion, while may be reduced from the freeway, ends up in all the municipalities that all these freeways go through. And is that, is that going to be also studied as part of your survey?
Yes, and this is a very valid point. And it is going to be studied. And indeed, one of the aims of congestion pricing is to avoid that because, you know, driving through the neighborhood's already happening, regardless of congestion pricing. Congestion pricing is advantages that will be able to shift those discretionary trips from the off-peak, from the peak period to the off-peak. Because they don't need to come to downtown Glendale or Los Angeles if that trip is discretionary, could be done during the off-peak period. Also, pricing will provide improved transit choices and van pooling to those who are willing to take that experience. What we're asking here, and it's not because of the money that we're getting from the USDOT. That's a unique opportunity, that is true. But it is time for Los Angeles to try something different, not only because we are different, but you are right. We have the congestion that no other region, such as Minnesota or Denver, who implemented those projects, have. So we need to give it a try. And there's always room for improvement. San Diego, when they started their program 12 years ago, it started as a demonstration. It was room for improvement. And now they're developing from two lanes, eight miles, going to 20 miles to open soon. And then they're looking for a network of 178 miles. Are we going that far? We don't know. That was, we need to start and to make the first step. And the first step was taken by our Board with the mission, consistent with the mission of Metro, which is to improve mobility in the region. That's what we're looking. It's just a one-year congestion reduction demonstration project.
Okay, let me go to Councilmember Njariyan.
And I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor. It is an unusual new program for Los Angeles. And to those folks out there, do not be afraid of something new. Let's give it a try. We need to use unique solutions, unique attempts to solve our unique traffic problems. This is a one-year program. We're going to be well-funded by the USDOT. New York couldn't do it. They tried. Their legislature did not go along with it. I think we have very little to lose and everything to gain.
Okay, thank you. I have already checked with my other colleagues, and they have no comments at this time. As for myself, I'm interested to wait and watch and see.
Thank you for the question.
And I thank you for your time and for the detailed presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. City Clerk, we have the next item.
Item number four is City Council and Staff Comments.
Do I have any staff or council comments? Mr. Yusefian? Mr. Yusefian, let's go to you.
Why don't you go somebody else?
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I have to get my thoughts together.
Mr. Quintero.
Yes, I wanted to comment on two meetings I went to. The first was a meeting with neighbors surrounding the bridge, the proposed bridge that will be built across San Fernando Road. And the staff, John O'Bagdami, and basically, they did a good job of trying to convince the neighbors that they will try to keep the impacts to a minimum. And anyway, very interesting meeting, very well-attended. And there were multiple concerns. It's going to be a tremendous, it'll probably be one of the largest public works projects in Glendale in many, many years. Then the second was the positive and very interested attendance at two of the Rockhaven meetings, informational meetings, one put on by the city staff and the other by the La Crisena Historical Society. And anyway, very well-attended. Last night, I think at least 120 people. During the day, at least maybe 45, 50 people. And I think all of Glendale is excited about Rockhaven and the possibilities there for historical society, perhaps using one of the buildings and just for a beautiful public space. And I think it's going to be a jewel in the Crescent Valley. And as we go through the, all of the different options, we're going to get plenty of community input. Mr. McFaul is reverting back to his old role as the Director of Parks and Rec and using his degrees to really let people understand what the possibilities are at Rockhaven. But it's something that's going to be enjoyed by the entire Glendale community. And obviously, the residents are very excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Thank you, Mr. Quintero.
Just briefly again, Mr. Mayor. I was, Mr. Zern or Mr. Bagdaniel, I was alerted to a dangerous traffic condition that resulted in a bicyclist being struck by a car at the corner of Calle Vaquero and Verdugo Road, essentially one block south of Mountain. There's a stop sign, and there are some bushes and hedges which block the line of sight for vehicles coming down Calle Vaquero, wishing to turn onto Verdugo Road. So if someone could take a look at that and see if the homeowner maybe needs a reminder to trim, or whether we have the authority to trim, just to make that safe. There's a lot of college students and a lot of activity with the civic auditorium church in that area.
Yeah, we can cut it if needed.
Just to keep it safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see several individuals in the audience that were actually at last night's Glendale Homeowner Recording Council, which I did not see them in the study session this morning. I just wanna give you some good news. This morning, the city council balanced the budget, folks. We made the cuts that was required, and we have a balanced budget. So just in case you wanna talk about it in oral communication, I just wanna save you that.
Well, we have one enthusiastic on here. That's great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I have a couple of comments. One is just by way of an announcement. The Twenty-Fifth Annual Montrose Arts and Crafts Festival begins this weekend, June the seventh and June the eighth, Saturday and Sunday, ten a.m. to six p.m. on Saturday, and ten a.m. to five p.m. on Sunday. This is one of the older public events in the city of Glendale, and it is the largest public event in the city of Glendale. Draws between fifty and sixty thousand people, about five hundred vendors. It is a, the third-largest crafts fair in the state of California, and the third-oldest in the state of California. It's quite a, quite an activity, and if you have the opportunity to attend, you should. It's a lot of fun. Yes?
Do you have to be an artist or a craftsman to appreciate the show?
Absolutely not, by virtue, and you can, I can prove that by the fact that I go. No, I volunteer here, but there is an international food court, there is a kids' zone that's quite extensive, there are a number of family activities, there's live entertainment, and it is, on Sunday, they have a farmer's market as well. So it is a lot of fun, and we find that people attend twice, wants to bring their family and wants to shop for fine art and crafts. So, thank you for that prompt, I appreciate that. The other two notes I have are about a couple of issues in the city that are sort of still lingering, and I guess both, one falls into your backyard, Mr. Zern, and the other, perhaps, into Mr. Bagdaniel's ballpark. What is referred to lovingly and locally as the Love Canal issue upon Hermosa. There is a channel there that we've talked about in the past. It's been ongoing for about five years. The county was out again to spray for mosquitoes, and the residents are still wondering whether we're ever going to create some actual drainage there so that they don't have ponding water across the street. Now, I didn't bring it to your attention five years ago, just not that long ago, but they're, they've been actively pursuing it for some time, and would like to know if that is ever going to be resolved in some way, especially now that we're hearing about West Nile again, and summer is on, and
I can tell you, we've looked at it, and we continue to look at it, it is
The mosquitoes are continuing to look at it, too.
Far, far from an easy fix, including extensive, potentially extensive excavation and work on private property, if in fact they would even allow us to do that. So, very, very difficult project. The flows on that street and the drainage on that street are very, very challenging, but we haven't forgot it. We continue to look at it, and we also have sent our environmental folks up there on a regular basis to offer any assistance, all the way up to and including cleanup. So, any, any issues there, any coordination with the
We might wanna revisit some of those folks and
We will do.
Update them, and, and the other one is, I think it's, it's on Hillside, and it's the same situation with the parking, Mr. Bagdaniel. It is because there is no, no limited parking there, the parking on that block just off of Verdugo, or excuse me, Canyatta, pardon me, pardon me, is just a continual problem. It is all day and into the night, and it's mainly parking from, unfortunately, young people. And all of the garbage goes out onto the lawns and the parkways, and we've talked about a variety of ways to mitigate that. There's no limit on the parking, and the residents there are just being driven crazy, and consequently, they're driving me crazy, too. And so, basically, we've, every option that's been offered these folks, these residents there, somehow or other, we've come to the conclusion, well, we can't really do anything. I think we need to do something, whether it's enforcement, or signage, or something. Can we, can we talk to Mr., Mr. McDonald, I think it's Eddie McDonald who's there?
We can do that.
And, oh, okay.
Still my backyard, Mr.
Still in my backyard, okay, I'm, anyway, if we could, please, to see if we can get some kind of resolution there. And that is it. Are there any other staff comments? No, all right, next item, please.
Consent items number five, including means, we have following which are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Yeah, I have a request to pull item five F.
Consent count of exception to five F.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Hi.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Could we hear the, could we hear the item at five F, please?
Five F is Director of Public Works regarding the Los Angeles Metro Call for Projects Grant Funds. At F1 is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, and all associated grant funding documents with the Los Angeles County Metro for receiving proposition C discretionary funds for, to implement the fiber optic communication gap closure, or IAN, expansion project. At F2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute memorandum of understanding, MOU, and all associated grant funding documents for receiving proposition C discretionary funds to implement the Grandview Avenue modifications within the City of Glendale project.
At F3 is resolution authorizing city manager to execute a cooperative agreement with the City of Burbank for receiving Glendale's share of proposition C discretionary funds to implement the I5 SR 134 congestion management project.
Okay, let me go to Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked for this to be pulled. I may have given everyone a heads-up about this about six months ago, but this is basically the fruits of not only my efforts on the MTA, but as well as our staff, John O'Bagdaniel and his, the rest of his staff, to try and get as much, trying to get our fair share, I should say, of transportation money from the MTA. We were fortunate to, to get the votes necessary and get the qualifications for these projects. All that's left essentially is our issuing a memorandum of understanding that we are gonna proceed and fulfill these projects. One of them is the Grandview Avenue Crossing, including the upgrades and the sealed corridor improvements there. Another is the fiber optic communication gap closure, which will improve our communication network related for traffic signals and synchronization. And there's a little bit of money, eight hundred thousand, for congestion management at the I5 134 interchange. I'm working hard for your folk, for you folks at the MTA, and I hope to bring in even more money next time. We're in a fortunate position that the stars were aligned, and I had help from Mr. Starbird and, who was, and former Mayor Larry Zarian, when we went and got the votes from the North County cities to get me on this MTA board, and it's a great opportunity while I'm there to get everything we can. Clearly, without having a representative looking out for Glendale, these projects and this funding could have easily just been snatched up by some of the bigger characters at the MTA board. So, thanks, John O., thanks, Steve, and thank everyone on the council for their support on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Yusefian.
Question from the city attorney or anyone else. Some of these have a local match, I mean, actually, they all do have, some is four-hundred-and-twenty-six, the other one's two-point-four million, the other one's two-hundred-and-four million, two-hundred-and-four thousand. These local matches, they're coming from our current CIP?
Correct.
And did we allocate those in our this year's CIP fund?
Yes.
So it's already there? And which account does that come from? Is it
Various.
Okay. So, transportation money?
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, on the Grandview, that was all included when we came to you with the budget for the entire sealed corridor. We had broken that up into various crossings and indicated where we had grants and where we needed matches. I think that one, that one in particular is tax increment fund. Correct. Redevelopment agency.
Okay.
The others are Stretch that. The others will come out of either straight general CIP or transportation fund.
Okay, so we're not gonna go and
Oh, no. This is already budgeted.
Move the item.
Well, before you move the item, let me thank, thank Councilmember Najarian, or should I call you MTA Representative Najarian, and either way, thank you for, for watching the collective backs of your constituents, which is also our constituents, the public and residents of Glendale. We appreciate that. And then with that
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second.
We already have a motion and a second. Mr. Yusefian?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. The next item.
Next item is listed on the agenda as Oral Communications.
Can we just remind those looking in that Oral Communications as an agendized item has been moved to the end of the agenda, agendized items. However, at this time, on the, on the agenda, we hear from those who volunteer to limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making public announcements. We have two speaker cards for this time slot. One of them is Leon Mayer, followed by Marcia Hanford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the author, artist, and friends series for the Friends at the Glendale Library and the Glendale Public Library. Our next event is Thursday, June twenty-sixth, and we're having Brian Jenkins, one of the world's foremost authorities on terrorism and counterterrorism measures, and he will speak about his newest book called Unconquerable Nation: Knowing Our Enemy and Strengthening Ourselves. Now, Mr. Jenkins started his career as a Green Beret. He's been in the service of our country in combat in Vietnam and Nicaragua, and he served as consul to countries and institutions all over the world. And he presents a compelling study of where we are today in the struggle against terrorism and what can be done about it. He's, he has been for forty years researching and writing and counseling nations and our government in this respect. We think it'll be a great program for everybody who's interested in what's going on in our world, what's going on in our country. And we invite everybody to come to the Central Auditorium Library on June twenty-sixth, seven o'clock p.m., mission-free, parking validated. Do I have another thirty seconds? We didn't see Jane Austen last Wednesday, but we saw a lot of friends of Jane Austen. We had a very successful event at the library for the Confessions of a Jane Austen Addict. And I wanna thank at this time a member of the library staff by the name of Kathy Gatauski. And she put on a great spread, tea and crumpets and just delightful food, and everybody had a great time. And we also wanna remind everybody, when you come to the library, you can get the flyers of our events, and I'll have flyers for anybody as I leave today, if they just raise their hand, but don't forget our book nook. At our book nook, you can get almost, if not new books, for fifty cents, a dollar, two dollars, it's a great bargain. Drop in our book nook when you come to the library. Thank you very much.
Marcia Hanford, followed by John Sad.
Good evening, council, members of staff, the public. My name is Marcia Hanford. I'm here tonight representing the Glendale Historical Society. I want to announce an upcoming program that the Historical Society is presenting, and we hope that a lot of people will find this topic compelling and will attend. The topic is Don't Trash Your Windows. You'll Only Trash Your Property Value. We are having a presentation by Windows Restoration and Repair Incorporated from the South Bay, and their specialty is in how to refurbish existing windows. For people who are interested in keeping the historical integrity of their home, obviously, this is a topic that will interest all. We realize not everybody has really the same historical interest in their home, however, this still is a relevant topic because there are economic benefits to restoring existing windows versus ripping them out and putting in inexpensive replacements. Some of the old-growth wood that was made, that windows were made of decades ago is no longer available, for example. So some of the topics will include the benefits of keeping classic-style windows over investing in fads, keeping your home green and your budget lean, how to decide if your window is worth keeping, how to maintain your window, how to repair a damaged window, how to paint a window four to five times without affecting its operation, we've all had that happen, how to weather strip a historic window, do's and don'ts of preserving wood windows, do's and don'ts of preserving steel casement windows, the point of diminishing return, because there is a point where some windows just really have had it, how to replicate an original window, how to find old-style replacement hardware. This will be on June twelfth at seven o'clock at the First Congregational Church, two-thousand-one Canyatta Boulevard, seven p.m. It's open to the public, it's free. We do invite non-members of the Historical Society to leave a five-dollar donation, but it's not required or enforced. We really hope everybody will attend. No RSVP is necessary. So it's June twelfth, seven p.m. at the First Congregational Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. John Sad, please.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. I'm John Sad on behalf of the Glendale Educational Foundation. I'd like to invite all of you to the Alex Theater this Friday, June sixth, at eight o'clock, for the Glendale Educational sponsored student showcase. This year, we're going to have a lineup of students from all, throughout the school district, and we're especially pleased that this year, we're going to have students from College View, the school for the special-needs children of the district, and they're going to have a drum line and do a drum performance for us. So we're, we're especially pleased to have them. Also, this year, our master ceremonies will be our founding president, Chip Stone, and your former mayor, our former mayor, Eileen Gibbons. So we're particularly also happy to have them participating this Friday, June sixth, at the Alex Theater. Tickets are ten dollars. We certainly encourage all of you to come. The proceeds, the profits this year that we raise will go to fund cardiovascular equipment that's gonna go into all of our middle schools and high schools. So we appreciate the support of the city and the participation in the Alex Theater with us in this event. So thank you very much, and we hope to see you Friday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sad. Yes?
I would like to let Mr. Sad know, if you don't see me, it's not that because I don't support the organization. I'll be at Legal California City's conference, so that's, I'm leaving tomorrow morning, and I will be back Monday. So I will miss your great, sorry about that.
We will tell you all about it. Next item, please.
Next item is action items, and eight A is, well, there was one more actually card, Mr. Mayor, for an announcement by our fire department.
Well, this, I'm not sure, this list is Oral Communications, Fire Department, CERT program.
It's not Oral Communications, it's announcement for the CERT program? So if the fire department would like to come up?
Oh, I see. Okay. Big mistake, now I get it. Okay. We have an announcement.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Who is, who is the, who is the announcing entity, just so I may
I think I'm the announcing entity. As you're aware, Mr. Weaver made a comment last week that was very timely about the disaster that occurred in China, that we would have a severe problem. As everybody's aware, I've been a critic of the Glendale Fire Department, especially regarding the disaster program. I went into the CERT program, and I spent my twenty hours, I got my certificate, I read the book, front to back, highlighted it, did everything required. I want to suggest to every member of the city council that you enroll in the CERT program. I would also suggest that those people who are watching TV, who have young kids in high school, and the students at Glendale City College, also enroll into the CERT program. I have one other suggestion, that anybody who does join the CERT program, take advanced first aid training, because of the fact that we will be, as Mr. Weaver said last week, on our own, and if we had an earthquake at twelve o'clock noon, we'd only have sixty firefighters to help us, and they're gonna be busy trying to put out fires and take care of other things. And for you, Mr. Yusefian, I know you bought a first aid kit, but according to the newest And for you, Mr. Yusefian, I know you bought a first aid kit, but according to the newest regi, newest statistic, the majority of the people who will be injured will be those with burns, and I don't think that first aid kit has too much to do for burns, but the FEMA does, and I am strongly recommending every member of the city council enroll into the CERT program. 20 hours, it's, I didn't personally learn very much from these two teachers, and she is an excellent teacher, and so is Captain Godfrey. And I did learn something, but I'll tell you, it is a program that I think needs to be sponsored, needs to be pushed by the city of Glendale, because we will need people helping us.
Mayor Drayman, council, staff. I'm Greg Godfrey, the MS paramedic coordinator for the Glendale Fire Department, and I want to thank Dr. Spiritu for coming up here and talking about CERT. He was in our program, was very involved, had a lot of questions about the program, and after it was over, he asked us what he could do. And because he comes here and speaks a lot, and a lot of people listen to what he has to say, we asked him if he would come here and talk about CERT, talk about what he learned and how important it is, and how important it is for the community to be involved in this program that we teach at the Glendale Fire Department. So we want to encourage the community to come and take the CERT class. Like he said, it's 20 hours. Our next class starts June 5th, and you can sign up by calling 818-548-6404. And if you can't make the June class, our next class starts August 7th.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. City Clerk.
There is information up on the screen for anyone at home?
Oh, there is. There's a slide. There we are. 548-6402. Leave.
Okay.
Mr. City Clerk.
Moving on to action items. Mr. Mayor and council, at 8A is fire chief regarding adoption of very high fire hazard severity zones. At 8A1 is the ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Officer Mayor, I would like to have this item postponed. If you look at your staff report, there is a drawing that shows what the fire hazard thing is. I dare anyone to read any of the stuff on the bottom.
This map was developed using data products such as parcel land and city boundaries provided by local government agencies.
Wow. That is incredible. You can see that?
Just kidding.
Oh, you're...
No, I'm reading it back.
I can't tell where the streets are. I don't know what this is. I don't know, this is going to have a major impact on everybody's insurance. So I would like to see a bigger map, if possible, before we do this.
All right. I'm being told they do have the map available, Mr. Yusefian. However, if you would like to see if there's consensus to take this off calendar, I will be very happy to check.
Yeah, I'll, because I don't think even the city manager knows how this affects everyone.
Yes, Mr. City.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you should know that pursuant to state law, this ordinance needs to be adopted and become effective by July 1. We have slipped a couple of days because this matter didn't get through the, the curing of city staff until it was available for this meeting. If it goes beyond this, you can do it, but I would suggest we look at adopting it as an urgency ordinance.
Let me do this, before we all jump in to give our points here. Let me do this. Let me suggest that we give our presentation, and we'll see whether it is sufficient for, or to help with the concerns that have been raised. How's that? So who is going to make this presentation?
While he's getting set up, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do we have any discretion in approving this, or is this a...
CFC, California Fire Code, we're required to adopt it.
We have essentially no discretion.
That's correct.
May I ask again, who is making the presentation?
Happy to make the presentation.
You are? Okay.
It says we can change the map.
Okay.
You have to adopt an ordinance that demonstrates, that outlines the high or severe fire zones, but you can change the map depending upon the expertise.
So we do have some discretion.
Yeah, it doesn't say you have to have a severe fire zone, you have to adopt a map where you have them.
Okay, how are we doing over there?
Based on this lock, I think that's going to be... Uh, well, see, they're adding, they're adding the checkered parts. That's already, that's already been red. So it's, the ones with the lines through it, that they're adding to... So it says it's, very tight, so that's... But the red has been red for a while. Wow. I think so.
How are we doing?
Patch it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, sorry for the delay. We do have an electronic version here. It's launching just a moment here. Doug Nichols with the Fire Department, Fire Prevention Coordinator.
I might add, it's nice launching with you. All right.
Appreciate your support. The map that you have before you, and I can enlarge this even more if you, if you care, it is a map that was prepared through the State of California Fire Department, as well as the Los Angeles County Fire Department on our behalf. It was done with a series of modeling, computer modeling, that they did over a period of about two years throughout the entire state, gathering information from the various counties and cities throughout the entire state. They used a systematic process where the modeling was consistent throughout the entire state, so it wouldn't be local by local jurisdictions making determinations. And then they presented this map to the city for our review, and after our comments, sending back what we thought would be some adjustments, they accepted those comments back and then revised the map accordingly. So this is the revised map, and once we have actually adopted it, then they will send us the actual data to support that.
May I ask, just for the record, could you state your name?
Yes, I'm sorry, sir. Doug Nichols.
Thank you.
The map that you see before you is very similar to what we've used for many, many years, what we've referred to locally as the high fire hazard area. And it typically covers the hillsides in the Verdugo Mountains, San Rafael Hills, and in the San Gabriel Mountains as well. There are a few differences because of the modeling that was conducted. In the past, we've primarily used the, some of the zoning, some of the access issues, and various local restraints and constrictions that we have, where there's a lot of vegetation and brush. Very interesting, as we went through this modeling process, we found that the modeling that the state did almost mimicked our map exactly, from what we had done over the years and years of our local experience. So it was, as you can see here, as I kind of cruised down the Verdugo Canyon area, this particular area, the solid red reflects what was done by the modeling, and the hashed area is where we provide our local input, which they gave us the opportunity to provide based on our local knowledge of our community for what would be appropriate and through there.
Oh, you added the hashed area?
Yeah, this was based on some of the modeling, our local input as well, which is reflective of some of the areas that we have in our hillside and canyon areas.
Whoa.
So, and this is actually, surprisingly enough, even through the modeling, much of the area was reduced from the modeling from what we had done in the past with our best guess estimate, so to speak. And it's primarily done from a, what they call ember intrusion concept, and if I can kind of move over here towards a little bit, you'll see in some of these areas where, in the past, we had used Mountain Avenue in this area, if I can kind of, where this cursor is, is our breaking point. But through the modeling, they determined that if there was a brush fire up here in the area around Brown Park, for example, that the embers would be falling down to the south side of Mountain and likely cause ignition in these houses. So the idea was, if that's the case, that we need to include that within the high fire hazard area, and then when those homes are, in this case, rebuilt, because they're all existing homes, that they would need to comply with the new requirements so that their exterior structure, the siding, the decking, the roofing materials, the vents and things, comply with those that are required within the wildland interface, or what we now locally refer to as the Chapter 7A requirements. And it was determined that it was not just the exposure to direct flame and pigment from burning brush, but most houses ignite from falling embers. And so that's why they want to make sure that those houses that were subject to falling embers were hardened, so to speak, so that they could resist ignition from those falling embers. So as a result of that, the map was revised. We took their input, accepted that, modified with our local information, and now we have this revised map that will be maintained by the state on our behalf through the county of Los Angeles, who is our local contact, state contractor through the county. And will be covered through the state fire code because of going through this process, we don't have to do it locally, that it's covered through the state code adoption process, which we did in November last year, became effective January. The maps will become effective July 1st.
Yeah, one second. Can I conclude your presentation?
I'd be happy to answer any questions if I have.
Okay. Let me go to my colleague, Mr. Yusefian.
I'll tell you what my concern is. We took the state's modeling, and then we add all those hashed areas in addition to what the state already said. What you just effectively did, you just raised everybody's fire insurance, or canceled a whole bunch of people's fire insurance that they currently have through any of the other insurance companies, to a point that they all have to get state insurance now, which costs four times as much. And that, I mean, just go back a little bit. Can somebody go back a little bit? Come this way.
What neighborhood do you live in?
Well, this is northwest area.
Yes.
Okay. So right now, what are some of those streets that your hashed area is?
So I don't, I don't know the names of those offhand, it's a little, I'll have to tell.
I mean, that's, that's coming down almost to, you know, if that one is, yeah, you're coming almost to Kennett. So all of those things, all those houses, every one of those little rectangular things, there's a house there. Look at all those new houses that are going to be blue.
That's the cemetery.
That's the cemetery, yeah.
Open spots, the cemetery.
Yeah.
Grand view.
So if you go further to the right, let's go further to the right, keep going, keep going, come down. Look at all those houses. Go more. That's probably Rosmont. You almost included all of Rosmont. Keep going. I'm not worried about the empty spaces, but look at all those houses. There is probably thousands of houses you just included. What's the cost of that? Did anybody do any analysis of that?
Mr. Yusefian, if I could just respond for that for just a moment. If I, if you receive the cursor that I'm following along here is Mountain.
Okay.
This, this is actually our current boundary as of today. All those houses are currently in the high fire hazard area as of today.
So what is the red one before?
This area up here is the state modeling, determined that we're subject to ember intrusion zones, so to speak.
Okay.
And based on...
So what they did is they changed it? They moved it up?
No, in the previous map was something that we had adopted locally, based on our local knowledge.
And where was the previous map's line before?
Down here along Mountain.
Okay. It hasn't changed.
So it's, it's, we've maintained that same boundary.
So it has not changed? So somebody, so no one's going to have their insurance canceled?
No. And if I might just mention that briefly on insurance, the insurance industry uses their own standards. They often do not rely on this information. They, they have a whole different process that they use, and they really don't rely on this information.
You'd be surprised, they pulled it out and they said, "You're, you're on that map, you're a high fire hazard, we're not insuring you."
Okay.
You'd be surprised what they did.
That particular point, have we, did we get an answer?
Well, I'd like to go a little bit further and see where else does it include?
But let me just ask a more general question. If you could tell us what has changed?
Yeah, what did you add?
For example, this area right here, north of Mountain, in this Rosmont area, was excluded. That used to be the high fire hazard area. It no longer is. The area that, the Adams Hill area has entirely been removed because the modeling determined that we had no brush within this area. We had it in our high fire hazard area because it's narrow streets, hillsides, difficult access, but when you do run the modeling, there's no embers to fall there because there's no brush around it. So that was removed from the area.
Now, there's one of the benefits to developing a hill to the point where it's...
There's nothing, there's no brush.
It's like they used to talk, if you don't mind my saying, like Mort Saul used to talk about solving the smog problem in Los Angeles, is to create more smog so the particles are so large they can't fit up your nose.
I pointed out the area south of Mountain that had been included because of the modeling. Likewise, up the area south of Markridge, you can see all of this solid red in through here. The modeling determined that because of the brush north of Mountain, that the embers would likely drop on these homes in this area. And so what we determined is by, it would be very difficult to manage houses in individual blocks, so we tried to determine where would be logical breaking points, just for our own management purposes. And so that's where these lines come, where we try to find streets or logical breaking points to draw a line, so to speak.
Is this new or old?
Everything south of Markridge has been added.
So all that is new?
All this south of Markridge is new.
All right.
And again, the modeling is the solid red, and they've determined that those areas would be impacted by embers falling from a wildland brush fire.
Wow.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Quintera?
I just wanted to add that I live in a hillside in one of the red areas, but I don't have to do a state plan. There's private insurance that covers hillside homes, even though I'm clearly in the red. I'm in the middle of the red area, isn't I?
Okay.
Wow.
Did you get your question answered, or do you have?
Let me just, just be clear, and the point of this is that should you be in one of those zones, you're required to build a new home or rebuild a existing home to higher fire standards? Safe standards.
Yes, that's right.
Than otherwise required under the code.
Yes, there is a new section of the fire code that we recently adopted that included those, include those standards, and also they're just defining in what area do those standards apply.
I mean, shake roofs are out.
Correct.
The state.
The state is finally catching up to the city in many regards.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. City Attorney, this is an ordinance for introduction.
That's correct, sir.
How shall we proceed?
I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess the ordinance has been introduced, but until it's adoption, I'd like to get a bigger map.
Yes, I think that is appropriate, Mr. Yusefian. I do think we, just one second, I do think we need a map that is where the street names are included, and we can take a look at that more closely. Mr. City Manager?
I agree, and when we reviewed this report Monday, I asked fire staff to see if we can't get that same map on the fire department website, so people can do what we've done here this evening and blow it up and look for themselves to see how they're affected by this.
But there's no, there's no street names.
Right, no, with street names.
Yeah. With street names, that would be very helpful.
All right. Very good. Mr. City Clerk.
At AP is Director of Planning regarding proposed...
Thank you very much.
Regarding proposed ordinance amending Title 1, 2, and 30 of Glendale Municipal Code and the Southland Boulevard specific plan relating to miscellaneous revisions and zoning interpretations to the Glendale Municipal Code. At B1 is in motion to initiate.
All right. Mr. Hagani?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this, as the item says, is to initiate. As you know, every year, once or twice per year, we will bring to you a list of zoning code amendments that we have learned through the practice that are worth looking at. And to initiate a list of these amendments, all it means is that you give us the direction to particularly initiate these items, and after that, we assemble the zoning code advisory group, and we'll do our public outreach on these specific items. We do roundtable discussions with architects and builders, and any homeowner group that would like to have a discussion with us, and then we'll, eventually we'll take a draft to the planning commission, and the planning commission makes recommendations on those items to you. This particular list includes three particular categories. One is a list of major changes that we have identified that are inconsistencies or based on our repeated variances that we think are worth looking at, and maybe changing some of those particular requirements. The second group of amendments are those identified by the zoning administrator based on her interpretation that she has had to make several times on the same repeated item. And then the third piece is minor, basically cleanups. So there are the three categories. And of all the list of the amendments that we have in front of you, there are three that we have given options that we will discuss over the next several months, and those three items are rooftop... And those three items are rooftop equipment. This is a requirement for enclosure or covering the rooftop equipment and subjecting them to an administrative, minor administrative exception. Then, the walls and fences. This particular item, if you remember, before, we used to require design review for any item that required a building permit. And walls and fences that were over four feet tall would be requiring a building permit. With the new zoning, with the new building code, that is not the case. So, we have identified several different ways to identify the walls and fences and what requirements we could apply to them. And then, the last piece that we think we'll have some options to discuss are 50% demolition rule. In this case, the zoning administrator in so many, in a few cases, has determined that termite damage should be taken into consideration in determining that maybe sometimes the above 50% of demolition should be considered and allowing people to build the new structure with the old code. And in this case, the zoning administrator is asking for some direction on this particular case. So, I'm not going to get into this unless you'd like us to. But those are the three items that we have some options. The rest of them, we have some recommendations. We will discuss this over the several months that will follow and we'll schedule those for public hearings with the planning commission.
What I'd like to request and suggest, if my colleagues are of a like mind, is to take those three items, the rooftop equipment, the walls and fences, and the 50% demo rule, and calendar those for a specific date certain where we can get into those three specific areas with a greater input and not only from staff, but from council and the public. In the meantime, that will not stop us, stop you from going ahead with your, with the public outreach portion, the portion in terms of dealing with notifying homeowners associations and so on, architects and so on for roundtable and all of that. Does that, would that work, Mr. Hagani?
Yes, if I understand you correctly, you are asking if you could initiate the entire zoning text amendment for all of the items. However, in the meantime, we will schedule those three to have a focused discussion on those three while we're doing our public outreach and zoning code advisory.
That's correct. I was just hesitating using the word study session because there's just been a lot of, there's a proliferation of that. And although I think it's a good thing, I was just trying to find another way to word it. But that will work if that, if my colleagues are agreeable to that. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, there's more than three major issues in here, Hassan. One of them is the residential district general development standards. You're talking about changing setbacks.
Right.
There are reasons for the four, five, six. And so, that's a major issue. When you're trying to add on to your bedroom two feet or three feet and now you're telling people, "Oh, it has to be six-foot setback instead of four," all of a sudden, in the bedroom, you're gonna have this little notch, which makes absolutely no sense. That was part of the reasons. So, there are more stuff in here besides that. The other thing is the new ordinance, the new standard you're creating for play areas and the 10 parking spaces per thousand square feet. How is that going to be applied? If you're opening up a business that is doing play areas, one thing, it's another thing when you're doing, so there's a lot more in here. My problem, Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, the problem is we got pages and pages of changes.
Yes, Mr. Yusefian, I agree with you, but the point is that you're not losing the opportunity, nor is the rest of the council, nor the public, to discuss and debate that while the planning department does its some public outreach, which they have to do anyway. So, since we, what I'm suggesting is we hold those very issues over, but that we initiate this so that we have a motion to initiate so that the planning department in the meantime is not losing time with their public outreach, their roundtables with the public, et cetera, and their informational gathering portion of this.
But there's 12 pages, so maybe they can divide it into three and just bring the first four pages and then...
What I'm suggesting is a separate study session, I'll go ahead and use the word, for those items that are of concern to any of us.
But it's gonna be a lot.
Well, on the one hand, you're telling me, "Gosh, it's gonna be a lot." On the other hand, you're saying you wanna talk about it, so...
Right. Well, what I'm saying is I can't sit in here, because I could sit in here and name all of them. And so, how do we do that?
I think we, I think we have to handle it in a study session. That's why we need a study session. Listen, compared to some of the things this council's handled in the last year and a couple of months, Mr. Yusefian, this'll be a piece of cake.
Say no more.
Is that amenable to my colleagues?
I don't care. That's fine.
All right.
Get the ball rolling.
Mr. Hagani, can you give us an idea of the time factor, the timeline on this? So, we have a rough idea of when we can schedule this?
Typically, a list like this will take us six to eight months to discuss before we can schedule it for the planning commission hearings. And if I may, this is just simply to identify the topics that we will be discussing. And this is just to give you a sense of some of the ideas we have. None of this you are approving. You're only allowing us to have these topics discussed.
I understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Starburg? Can I talk to you this week about a schedule for this?
More than happy to.
Rather than try to settle something right now, let's do that later. All right. Mr. Quintero?
Yes, Mr. Hagani. I would like to put the 50% rule at the top of the list because that's something that's impacting people directly. So, let's get into that 50% rule, the sooner the better.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, to have this discussion, wouldn't it be better after you went to the public, asked for the planning commission? To give our input now without having the input from the community, developers, residents, whatever, seems like it's the cart before the horse. I mean, we're telling you to do this...
Ultimately, Mr. Weaver, there will be a public hearing anyway.
Oh, yes. There definitely will be. And they'll be here too.
Yeah. So, in any case, we have plenty of time and we will, we will calendar it. So, if I have a consensus to do that, Mr. Hagani, you need what exactly from us at this moment then?
We need to get direction from the city council to initiate the process of these amendments.
All right. Before we do that, we do have some cards. We have four speakers, if you still wish to speak on the subject. There will be public outreach and we will be having public hearings here before any kind of ordinance is approved. So, all we're doing tonight is initiating the process. Okay, let me ask you by name, since no one's jumping up and down. I have cards from Myrna Stanley, Garo Nazarian, Sakho Markusi, and Aram Alajadian. Okay, that is Myrna Stanley. Garo Nazarian, is he here?
He waited up.
Okay. Thank you, Sakho Markusi. Of course. And Aram Alajadian. I'm sorry, you're pointing at the podium? Okay, got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Mr. Markusi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I was gonna speak on topic of as and ees, but I have brought some court sections and I made copies for you just to look at, but I'll discuss these things.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, then.
Hold the item.
Right.
All right, Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmembers Nazarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
At AC, a city attorney and city manager regarding issues raised regarding the Rose Float Association and Dreaming of Roses solicitation of funds by council members for charitable organizations and the independence of such organizations from the city. At C1 is a resolution stating the separation between the city and a private nonprofit entity. At C2 is a motion directing staff.
Okay. All right, are we going to the city attorney and confess?
Yes, sir. If you're willing to hear a report from me, I'll try to keep it brief.
Thank you.
Sir Mayor, members of the council, the report provided to you today is, essentially focuses on three primary areas related to the Glendale Rose Float Association, Dreaming of Roses Incorporated, the solicitation of funds by council members for charitable organizations, and the independence of those organizations. What I have done in the report is divided it into three general areas and I'll talk a little bit about each one. One is the scope of council investigatory authority. And under that title, as council may recall, that at least a couple members were inquiring about the ability or the capability or frankly, whether there was even a desire to investigate the legitimacy, workings, and operations of either the Glendale Rose Float Association or the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated and their 501(c)(3) status. The genesis for that discussion, it really is the question of the investigatory authority of a, of a public agency. In particular, the legislative concern that a public agency would have to investigate a local nonprofit operation, its legitimacy or conduct, where that nonprofit has no legal or contractual relationship with the city. I noted in the report the more recent history of the Glendale Rose Float Association, at least since 1978, of Dreaming of Roses Incorporated since 2005. Both organizations have bylaws. I wanna point out one question that came up about bylaws of the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated. As you might know, the, a speaker who has been challenging Dreaming of Roses Incorporated and questioning a number of its activities, has noted that the bylaws were for the support, to support the history preservation, display, and use of brass instruments. That was the original bylaws that were filed with the Internal Revenue Service seeking the 501(c)(3) exemption. Those bylaws were amended. I received a copy of the amended bylaws. They were amended in August 2006 to reflect a more specific purpose, and that is, one, it deleted any reference to brass instruments and had a number of general categories, but the most specific of which was to provide assistance in fundraising for the Rose, for Tournament of Roses float. In speaking with legal counsel, who actually prepared the original bylaws and the amended bylaws, legal counsel did indicate there was an error in the drafting of those original bylaws and that the bylaws were amended in '06 and a copy is attached to your report. Also indicated that at the time you file your request for exemption with the Internal Revenue Service, you're required to file your articles of incorporation, your original bylaws, any financial statements that you might have, your California Form 3500, your exemption form, and your federal request for exemption application for Form 1023. It is not required that you then file subsequent amendments to bylaws, which could occur numerous times depending upon the board of directors' inclination and the amendments they'd like to make unless you're amending them to the point where you're no longer a viable 501(c)(3). So, I did wanna point that out because it was emphasized by a speaker two weeks ago that the bylaws focused on brass instruments and in fact, that the originals did, but they have been amended to delete that and reflect, and to focus more on the Rose float, Tournament of Roses, Rose float. Both, there's no required, as I noted, our research revealed that there is, at best, a tenuous, a highly tenuous legislative purpose to investigate a private nonprofit with no legal or contractual relationship with the city. Neither the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated or the Glendale Rose Float Association are anything other than a volunteer organization that provide funds to the city on a volunteer basis. I found nothing, for example, in either of their bylaws that require them to provide their funding on their, any funds raised on an annual basis to the city of Glendale. The Glendale Rose Float Association does have a provision in their bylaws that provides that upon their dissolution, any assets or funds raised essentially as sheet or must be turned over to the city of Glendale. But nothing else in their bylaws required that their funds be donated to the city of Glendale. And as a result, in reading through various cases in various states where the issue of the, this so-called auxiliary power to investigate and to enforce it through process such as issuing subpoenas for books and records or appearances of individuals, in reviewing cases throughout the United States where that was the primary issue, in other words, the authority to actually investigate, and I listed a number of them in your report, you can see that those cases focused on what would be fairly obvious or fairly clear legitimate legislative concerns. Investigating a police department for corruption, for example. Investigating the authority of the mayor to strip away the power of the city council to have a, or the power of a city council to strip away, I'm sorry, the mayor, elected mayor, who stripped away the power of a city council to have control over a particular committee, which was specifically allowed by law, and the mayor unilaterally stripping that away. Other investigations of a redevelopment agency, for example, and their use of funds, those were all examples of cases where the court upheld the use of legislative power. The more recent case and the more closely, I say, connected case to California, was a California case involving the California Supreme Court upholding the issuance of subpoenas to insurance companies for them to provide copies of their policies to reflect their coverage when the city was investigating groundwater contamination and their possible responsibility and liability for cleanup. And also looking at the industry members, dry cleaners and the like, that may have caused that contamination. The court upheld the issuance of that subpoena. In upholding that, the court did note, however, that they had to examine the valid legislative purpose and they went through an analysis in that case to determine, in fact, there was a legitimate legislative purpose for doing so because the city was going to be potentially on the hook for the cleanup of contaminated groundwater. And also, the city needed to determine whether or not these industries, again, many of them were dry cleaners and the like, had actually contaminated the water and would they be financially able to bear the cost through insurance for that cleanup? And the court ultimately found that that was an appropriate legislative concern. I found nothing anywhere close to the notion that a city council could, should, or would investigate a nonprofit that has no legal or contractual relationship with the city of Glendale. I note that we received an email from Joyce Sokoloff, I believe it was actually published in the news press today if I'm not mistaken, president of the Glendale Rose Float Association, reiterating that it is an all-volunteer organization and what it's responsible for and its recommendation of the design of the Glendale float entry, that it is a volunteer organization, it has no formal relationship, not only with the city, but with Dreaming of Roses Incorporated, that they are separate entities. So, frankly, I have a difficult time from a legal perspective finding a legitimate legislative purpose for attempting to have nonprofit entities which have no legal or contractual relationship opening their books to the city of Glendale for an investigation. That said, there, I looked at two other main issues, and that is, what would the city council have authority to look at consistent, again, with lead precedent? I'm not speaking of what I think they should do, what I think they shouldn't do, or what I believe should or should not be the case, strictly what the law would contense if the matter ever was pulled into court by one party or another. The two other areas that, the one other area was that I titled, Items of Inquiry or Action, is the, one was the issue of reaffirming or reconfirming the separate nature of the nonprofit. In this case, it would be either or both, the Glendale Rose Float Association or Dreaming of Roses Incorporated, from the city of Glendale. There was some mentioned by council members a couple of weeks ago about the need to declare that these nonprofits are separate and distinct from the city of Glendale, much like, and that they, for example, they don't have the express authority by either this city council or by the city of Glendale through its sponsorship or cosponsorship policy that they had recently adopted. And that it's important to ensure that the public understands that there is a separation between the city and these nonprofits. I have reviewed that, noted in the report, that is something certainly a legitimate area for inquiry and discussion of the city council. And I have prepared a resolution to reaffirm or reconfirm that separation. And the reason I, by the way, I mentioned that it's either, the resolution notes confirm or reconfirm. The reason I use the phrase reconfirm or reaffirm is that it's essentially a pretty common axiom that these nonprofits, unless they have some contractual relationship, are independent of the city. But if the council feels it's important to restate it because of the fact that a council member or more may be involved in fundraising for a nonprofit and the public may or may not be misled or confused by it, it's certainly appropriate to do so. Also, in the area of solicitation, these organizations do solicit funds for the Rose float. Dreaming of Roses Incorporated notes that they may raise funds for other purposes as well. There are provisions with the council or there are... There are provisions with the council, or there are areas where the council may wish to discuss, and that is the potential limiting of aggressive solicitation. Solicitation is a form of speech and is protected by the First Amendment, but aggressive solicitation has been held by the courts to be a form of solicitation that can be regulated and limited. And if this council feels that it's important to address the issue of aggressive solicitation, and I've noted in the report how that's defined, is usually solicitation through intimidation or fear and the like, and it doesn't have, and again, how we nibble around the edges of that and the nuances of what that means, does it mean standing in front of somebody with a club? Or does that mean having someone with, under the color of official authority, making the request? That's certainly something that this council can discuss and regulate should they choose to do so. Lastly, I noted that this council could, based upon the cases that I've analyzed, determine that they would like to impose either a limit or a ban on solicitations from entities which have contracts with or do business with the city. In particular, limit or ban contributions by nonprofits where an elected official sits on the board of those nonprofits. This is somewhat close to or analogous to the discussion we had last week about the campaign contribution financing limits where the council discussed a potential ban or limit on contributions from, or from entities that are either doing business or seeking public benefits in the form of an application for a project or some other benefit from the city, and the notion that you could ban contributions, whether it's for a period of time before or after an application is pending, or if someone is doing business, you could ban the contribution from anyone who is doing business with the city to a nonprofit entity where an elected official sits on that board, either as a director, an officer, or has a certain percentage ownership. And under FPPC guidelines, you're usually looking at a 10% ownership or greater. Finally, I should point out, in that context, that solicitation of funds by a council member for charitable purposes is not per se unlawful. In fact, it's recognized by the government code and FPPC regulations. They're sometimes known as "at the behest of" contributions. The state legislature, a number of years ago, in grappling with the notion that when a seated elected official is, while technically possibly not at that moment out running for office, they are considered to be a candidate for office, even though they may not be actively soliciting campaign contributions, they may be out and as a result, seeking funds in some fashion. And if funds are donated to their favorite charity, for example, should those be considered either gifts to the council member or, and I'm using council member, it could be any elected official that falls within FPPC regulations, but I'll use council members because that's what we're talking about here. Would they be gifts? Would they be a campaign contribution? Or where would they fit? And the legislature ultimately came up with this "at the behest of" provision in the government code and set a threshold and just notes that if money is donated "at the behest of," in this case, fill in the blank, a council member, and that threshold is $5,000 or more, then that has to be reported and that report is a public record that must be kept on file. So it's, I pulled up a couple of FPPC opinions, one just this past January in 2008, another one in 2004, which really emphasized that it's, with one, a couple of exceptions that I'll mention. It's something that is somewhat acknowledged within the state. Both opinions dealt with a council member who was the CEO or president of a fairly significant nonprofit. One was a family service agency, the other was a rescue mission. I believe this rescue mission was down in Tustin if I'm not mistaken, but I'd have to look at the opinions, I actually brought them with me. And in both those opinions, the FPPC determined that the monies that were raised were "at the behest of" a council member and would have to be reported, but in no other way were they found to be unlawful or inappropriate. In one FPPC opinion, they noted that one of the CEOs actually drew a salary of up to and possibly even greater than $200,000. And if the gifts to the, or the solicitations and the ultimate gifts to the charity were used directly to pay those salaries, that in fact, the FPPC could pierce that and determine that that's a gift to the council member and potentially inappropriate. But they essentially didn't find that in both of those opinions. So I want to emphasize that while you can certainly look at the issue of limiting or banning solicitations from entities which have contacts, contracts with or do business with the city, it is acknowledged under state law at least that this does occur. In fact, there's some recent legislation that didn't get beyond committee that almost increased that level from $5,000 to $7,500. Lastly, the mayor mentioned last week that the speaker who had raised these issues on a couple of occasions should provide the city attorney with copies of all documents that they had. That speaker did provide me through access to their website, a number of documents, one document that I did not receive and have not received is a copy of a complaint to the IRS, although I understand one has been made. I didn't receive a copy of that. Of the documents I did receive, there was a letter from the FPPC that seems to reflect that a complaint has been filed with the FPPC. Lastly, I did speak to a deputy district attorney, asking him if there had been a formal complaint filed about Dreaming of Roses Incorporated or council member Weaver and his connection or activities in connection therewith. The answer was, "I don't know everything that goes on in this office, but I'm pretty well, I'm pretty well connected within the office and I would know that if it was and I have not heard of one. Heard of rumors, but I have not heard or seen a formal complaint." So I, and that was as of Thursday, so if a formal complaint was filed after Thursday, I don't have any information about that. I'll be happy to, perhaps it's best if I stop there and provide you with answers to questions. I do have other documents that have been provided that I have obtained, and I should tell you from the documents that I have seen and the FPPC opinions that I have read and the cases that I've read, nothing from the documents that I've received in the context of whether or not solicitations were improper or inappropriate, there's nothing I've seen from the documents that reflect that. I frankly am not a tax expert, don't have, didn't provide this information to a member of my staff and said, "Go become an expert in 501(c)(3) entities and their creation." If there are technical issues involving the creation of the 501(c)(3) and its continued status, I believe that's within the purview of the IRS and someone with greater expertise than myself with the Internal Revenue Service should be looking at that.
You're amazing. You haven't drawn a breath in 24 minutes.
I have a tube that's-
Wow. Okay. Just if you're watching the clock, I just wanted to-
Obviously, I wasn't watching the clock. It's-
All right. Let us, let us put an asterisk there and go to, let me go to my colleagues and get some input. Let me start with council member Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda after talking to so many people who had issues what was happening. Just want to make a few items very clear. I don't have a problem with the Rose Float Association. I was a member of the Rose Float Association. I worked on the float in the past. I have no problem with the float. Make that very clear, right off the bat. The issue in here is a conduct of a council member, the way he solicits funds for either this charity or another one of his favorite pet projects, which happens to be Miss Asia. The problem is, it's extremely aggressive. I have gone out there and raised money for city projects, for Unity Fest, which is a city sponsored. I go, I say, "Would you like to support this?" They ask me if we would like to support, what we would do. I tell them, "Write a check to the city of Glendale." And they write a check to the city of Glendale. I give it to Zazet Ayad, and I go down, and if it's over $5,000, I fill a form saying that "on behest of me, I ask such and such organization to donate $5,000 to the city of Glendale for that particular charity." I don't berate them, I don't call them 15 times a day, I don't call them on their cellphone, I don't call the person that is expediting their project in front of the city council, I don't call them two hours before their project is in front of us and ask for the same money over and over again. I do not put a limit on the amount they want to pay. I also don't say, "There's a minimum of $10,000 you gotta pay." This is what we hear. Now, this is the information that was provided to us in here, and of course, we got some other information that we got ourselves, especially the one that, the form that we have to fill. And when you look at the form that we have to fill, there were $30,000 that was on behest. There's a whole bunch of names missing here. The council member auctions off or pre-sells seats on the Rose float at $10,000. I know several individuals who have paid $10,000. Those individuals have projects in front of us, in front of the city council, big projects, some that are subsidized by the city. So it gives a very bad taste. I mean, it just gives a notion that, okay, you gotta pay to play. Now, if you take campaign contributions, you have to list it. It's obvious, but when you take contributions from people who have projects in front of the city, and then you put it in your own organization which you happen to be a chairman of, then it happens to be a corporation that you're also a member of, it just smacks of inappropriateness. And then there's questions from the members of the Rose Float Association, past members, which many of them have left the association for the same exact reason, where they try to find out what is going on, information is not being given to them, then they receive a letter from the IRS saying, "By the way, you forgot this account and you have X amount of dollars, thousands of dollars in that account, and they have no clue and they get penalized for it." These are the problems. So how do we solve this? Where do we go from here? It's very simple. I think we should have a policy that if any council member sits on a board of any nonprofit or any other organization, especially profitable ones, any corporations, if you have 10%, you know what? I don't think that person should be able to aggressively solicit. I understand you can't say no solicitation, but you cannot aggressively solicit. And we need to have a definition of what aggressive is. How many times do you ask? Do you call somebody at 2:00 in the morning on their cellphones? We all on this dais have heard this. We have auto associations that they call the council members to talk about their concerns. And after it's finished, there's envelopes in front of every one of them. You should help this float. Well, maybe we will think about it. Well, gee, you know, don't you care about the city? And then they call and say, "You know, we helped the float and so can I get my project approved?" I go, "What does one have to do with the other one? Does your project have merits? It'll be approved. If it has no merits, it won't." And they're just baffled and look at us. And so this is my problem, to an extent, while the Rose Float Association and the Rose float is a very worthy entity, but the manner that we are getting money for it, I almost feel like we're pimping the city. And I don't think that's appropriate. It's not worth it for $45,000 a year to lose the integrity and the name of the city of Glendale. It's just not worth it. The old Rose Float Association I used to know, and I was a member, Ginger was a member, and many other people, and some people were in here, never did that. Whatever money they made, they kept a little amount for next year, the rest of the money was given to the city, whether it was 20,000, 5,000, or 60,000. It all depends what the golf tournament brought in, whatever. That's not what happens in here. And based on the IRS tax records, which we have copies of, which I guess our astute attorney did not want to tell us, well, it was on the internet, and these are IRS numbers. And I'll tell you, the numbers are just amazing. I didn't know we made that much money. Exhibit 3 IRS number, this is what was filed. In 2006, 97,000. In 2007, 107,000. In future, they're anticipating in 2008, there will be 120,000. Total for three years, 325,000. Now, they do have expenses, which they submitted in order to get their nonprofit organization. 2006, they anticipate an $83,000 expense. 2007, anticipated 91,000. And 2008 is 104,000. But for 2006, 45,000 goes to the city. It says for 2007, 49,000. And for the following year is 56,000. So I don't know if that's going to happen or not. So, and to an extent, what happens between Dreaming of Roses and Rose Float Association? It's between them. I really don't care, to be honest with you. I really don't care. They're two separate entities. I just don't want our good names be muddled. That's it. So I think to have, we think we need to have some kind of aggressive solicitation ordinance, and it's not just for this one, and you know, the other one is not on the agenda. I will tell you that the other one is a lot more aggressive than this one has been. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I'm just going to go down the dais this way. Mr. Najarian, if you have any-
Part of, you know, I really wanted to hear the relationship between these organizations because I really, I've read the reports, and I am somewhat confused. If this, if the Dreaming of Roses is not a city organization, why are we publishing in our city magazine basically a promotion for the Dreaming of Roses event? How did that happen? Private companies can't buy space in our City Views magazine. You go to the Dreaming of Roses website and you see the city of Glendale link. So I, as a city councilman, am probably more confused now than I was before as to what the relationship is. The GWP donates $5,000 to this organization at the same time we're firing, I don't want to say firing, but cutting staff 5% in each and every one of our city departments, including police, including fire. And we've raised our water rates just last year. So how does, how does that happen? I want to know how that happens. And I think the silence as on the part of the city perpetuates the misperception, the erroneous affiliation between these, between the city and the Dreaming of Roses, if what you're telling me is that there is no relationship between the two. Point number one. Point number two, I think we need to pass an ethics law, an ethics rule in this city that if you are going to be a director, an officer, in any way involved in any sort of organization, private, public, nonprofit, that you be conflicted out of any consideration of, I want to go a year back to a year forward, if there's been any donation made over $50 to your organization or to your nonprofit entity. You know, we can't change what's happened in the past, but I think we need to pass that kind of law. Because what I am hearing is that there is a pay to play out there. And let's just, let's just create this ordinance, let's pass it unanimously so there's never any further question about, from the members of the public, from the business community, from the developers, that gee, I better give to this organization because, fill in the blank, if I don't, I'm going to lose my project. Those are my two points, basically. I'd like to see the ethics, the ethics ordinance, and I'd like, I want an explanation as to how, if it's not related to the city, it's in our City Views magazine, it's got the city of Glendale link on it. How?
With the logo.
With the logo.
Right. We will come back to all of these. We're making notes. We're making notes. Let's get through the comments. Mr. Quintero. I'm sorry, were you...
I'm done. That's all. Okay. I want to focus on the Rose Float and its future, and I want to focus on the Rose Float Association. I'm very happy that we have some of the members here in the audience, and I also read Ms. Sokoloff's email. And I guess what I'm after tonight, hopefully after this evening, we're gonna get into a situation where there's more community participation. My feeling for quite a while, and I've been through the Rose Float, when they're doing the decorating and hung out and so forth, but my feeling is that there just isn't enough community participation. I think the organization, well-intended, back in the late seventies when it was founded, I think, like many nonprofits, after a while, it kind of loses steam. I mean, and I'm looking forward to asking questions about what the membership is like, how many members there are. But I'd like to make this Rose Float truly a city float, something that people relate to on a year-round basis. I know it's kind of hard to keep interest up in the middle of the summer when you're thinking January and, you know, New Year's events, but try to do something with service clubs, try to do something with youth groups, senior programs, just try to bring in more membership, whether they actually join the Rose Float or not, but at least try to include a larger circle of people so that it becomes the entire city's float. And I also think that our Arts and Culture Commission and our Parks and Recreation Commission can play a large part in helping and being part of this float. I mean, I know the Parks and Rec Commission votes yea or nay and so forth, but I'd like to get them more involved in arts and culture. I'd like to also get them more involved. And then just something as simple as at the end, you know, after the Rose Parade, it's basically the float is taken to brand, Alex, I always drive by and take a look at it, and now people look at it. Well, why don't we do that for two days? And why don't we also take it down to Adam Square for two days? And let's take it up to Montrose for two days. I mean, let's get the city geographically involved in actually viewing the float. It can be more than just a kind of Alex Theater type of viewing or downtown brand viewing. So for the most part, I'm looking forward to hearing and asking questions of some of the Rose Float people that are here tonight. And then I do think that legally, we have to kind of clear the air or make it clear as to what the organizations are about, whether it's Rose Float or Dreaming of Roses, but we have to have some kind of understanding about what's going on presently, whether we look at the past or not, but what's going on presently. And then maybe some of the ideas like the solicitation of funds by a city councilman, people who have business before the city, then that may not be a bad idea either for any nonprofit, not this particular one. But overall, I think it's time to kind of get a better understanding of what's going on because I'm not quite sure to tell you the truth.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
I'll pass for now. I'd like to hear the rest of whatever I said.
All right. I want to make a couple of comments. One is, and I know that this isn't what Mr. Yusefian meant, but I want to, for those who were listening that may have interpreted that way, I want to just go on the record. I think it's important that we don't accuse our city attorney of any kind of obfuscation here. He has worked on this report at our request. The fact that the speaker, as we keep referring to him, we mean Barry Allen, submits a packet to us as we walk up to the dais with a group of documents and a notation next to each as exhibits, and one says IRS form with a number, complaint form not included, our twenty pages of support materials. Our city attorney mentioned in his presentation somewhere in that twenty-three minutes that it was not amongst the materials that were pointed to him on the net. To me, it's immaterial anyway. The point is, Mr. Allen gave it to us. So, you know, I just want to make it clear that I don't think our city attorney, after the volumes of materials, went through it and said, "Aha, that one IRS form," which is a complaint form filed apparently by Mr. Allen anyway. So I mean, you know, I look through these exhibits, I see what the point is. To me, the issue is not about whether an unamended or original bylaws talked about banned instruments, still talks about banned instruments, doesn't talk about banned instruments, whether there's an address listed that's Mr. Weaver's house or some office or something at the Burbank Airport, a document where they said there's a complaint and there's an investigation of a complaint, but the complaint was made by the person who is claiming there was a complaint made, you know, and on and on and on. To me, these are not the issues. There are some serious issues to look at, but I think my colleagues, Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Najarian, have identified those. I just want to say that, I can tell you from my own experience, I have served on quite a few nonprofit boards over the years, and I think all of us have, and many of you have. And there's a reason for that. It's because many of you are interested in your city, and you're interested in the betterment of your city and your community, just as people who run for office generally are. However, when I first ran for office in two thousand four, I resigned from those boards. And I know a number of my colleagues did as well. I left a couple of terms as a vice president of development with the Alex. I did that because my job at the time was to coordinate fundraising. And I didn't want to be doing that even while I was running for office. So I terminated my involvement there. I could name a half a dozen organizations that I stepped aside from, even professional organizations, for that reason. So I agree with my colleagues who are asking for some kind of ordinance. I'm not smart enough to know how we write that, but I'm gonna, I'm going to join my colleagues that are asking or suggesting direction to staff to bring us an ordinance that deals with sitting council members who are in the process of soliciting funds for organizations. I don't care whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit or anything in between. I think that's fair, and I think that's appropriate. And then with regard to the Glendale Rose Float Association, I don't want to see anything that takes the shine off of what they're doing and have been doing for many years. One of the things I've been talking about since I came to this city council was, how do you build a sense of community in a city that is moving in twenty different directions at once and is so diverse and dynamic and throttling forward constantly on a whole host of levels? And one of the ways is the Rose Float. One of the things I hear a lot is, you know, we win awards for the Rose Float. Do you want to know something truthfully? I could care less about the awards. And the reason is that that isn't the goal, to me. It is a sense of purpose that relates to community, developing a sense of community, engaging the public, bringing them together for a single purpose, whether it's volunteering your time to decorate the float, serving on any of the committees and so on, the fundraising, et cetera. These are the ways that you bring people together. I am a huge advocate of Glendale continuing to be a participant in the parade and Glendale supporting a Rose Float. So I also agree with my colleagues on that level. Now, when we first heard from Mr. Yusefian week before last about this, I asked him a couple of times in a couple of different ways to make sure I was hearing correctly from him what he was asking. His words were, "I want a resolution distancing the city of Glendale from Dreaming of Roses and to bring clarification to the roles of the Glendale Rose Float Association, Dreaming of Roses, and the city of Glendale." I think that has since orchestrated, if I'm picking up just of my colleague's comments, that has since orchestrated a bit to some direction to staff about an ordinance dealing with aggressive fundraising or fundraising in general, aggressive or otherwise, to the extent that we can. And if we do have that, Mr. City Attorney, it should be something that is not just a declaration and a statement, it should also have something in it that provides enough teeth so it is meaningful. Then in addition to that, it becomes obvious that we also need to clarify our support for the float as well. Couple of years ago at least, there was a letter to the editor in the Glendale News Press. It was written by a fellow named Tim Doyle, who happens to be the older brother of Matt Doyle, in our, fill in the blank all of a sudden, human relations director. And resources, excuse me. And he was commenting about the fact that the city of Glendale is lucky, that we have thousands of people, thousands of residents in this city who are connected to the studios in one way or another, involved in the arts, that we can't somehow do this in a dignified way that brings the public together, that involves them more. I support what Mr. Quintero was talking about when he's talking about more community participation in the float. We're, gentlemen, if you don't mind my saying, we are collectively to blame for part of this, and that is that we haven't really taken a leadership role until now in discussing how we want to communicate this message to the public. We want your support. So this is another benefit that's coming out of this. We're making that point clear as well. I'll stop there for the moment. We do have some speakers, and I'm sure we're gonna ask some questions, make some further comments. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a couple of comments so you don't think that this is letting the crap out of Dave Weaver.
That's a technical term?
No, because that's what they say. Let me tell you some of the good parts of things that Mr. Weaver does. He's been able to activate a lot of children from the schools that come there and decorate the float. As a matter of fact, the numbers are so large that not only they decorate the Glendale float, they decorate three, four other floats in a process. I think he does a good job. The one big problem that Mr. Quintero was addressing, which was, gee, the numbers have dropped, is what happens is, when you love a bird so much and you start holding it so tight, in the process of holding it so tight because you love it so much, you suffocate the bird. That's what's happening in this case. A lot of us who used to go and volunteer are no longer going, and I was one of those people. When I walked in to work on the float, I was specifically told, "You are not needed. There's more than enough people in here." And when you go there two, three times, and you're told, "You are not needed," you don't go there anymore. Mr. Carnahan used to be there, he was there before. I used to be there. He used to bring the donuts and the coffees, and his wife was there, and he would show me how to decorate the float and so on and so forth. Most of the adults have left the decorating business. Disney used to be there, they're gone. Because what happens is, Councilman Weaver tries to orchestrate the whole thing, he does the whole thing, and let me tell you, the man works his fingers to the bone. I am not questioning that. But in the process, is a lot of people feel left out. And that's why the Rose Float Association as an organization really doesn't have much because Dreaming of Roses basically took over everything. I will do everything, I will do all this, this, and that, and he worked day and night out for the city council, sending us the letters, doing this, making the phone calls. He does all of it. And in a nonprofit organization, what counts is teamwork. It's the feeling that the community is involved, and everybody wants to give a little bit so they feel they have a part in it. It doesn't work when one person does all the work and everybody feel like, well, my help is not needed, I'll go give my time somewhere else. And that's what's happens. And that's what Mr. Quintero was saying. That's what has happened in the last few years. Because we all used to go to all the fundraisers and stuff like that that they used to have, there would be hundreds of people, hundreds, and it's not there anymore, with the exception of one, and that's the Dreaming of Roses, and nothing else.
Okay. I'd like to go to the public, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I have a card from Barry Allen, followed by Nancy Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Thank you for mentioning the exhibits that I provided to the council regarding some of the more technical issues. Two weeks ago, I stood on this dais and spoke of council member Weaver's business, Dreaming of Roses. And council members Yusefian and Quintero had heard some of the same stories I did, but with only two and a half minutes, we'll skip a whole bunch of this stuff. And one of the things I want to mention to the city attorney, that Part II B, it requires a current copy of the bylaws when you file your 1023. So it's right there, 5B. And the other issue, there are a number of issues. And one of those is the city's complicity with the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated. As I think one of our council members mentioned, the council member Najarian, about the fact that the advertisement in the City Views, nobody else can do that but Mr. Weaver can. And I think it's time for Mr. Weaver to really resign from the council and continue his fundraising as a civilian. I'm willing to suggest that his prowess at fundraising will not be as successful as it has been being an elected official. And we've already talked about the thirty thousand dollars raised in a month for phone calls. And I think the public is entitled to a full disclosure of, by Mr. Weaver, the money raised and spent since two thousand five. And I think there are several members of the Glendale Rose Float Association will probably speak to that issue as well. And of course, from the exhibits that are on file with the IRS and from the Glendale Rose Float Association, the Rose Float Association in two thousand six said they gave the city thirty-five thousand dollars, and Dreaming of Roses said they gave the city forty-five thousand dollars. And I think the more we encourage that, that type of reporting by a city council member affects everyone sitting on that dais, everyone in this management, and it affects everyone who has given their time and their talent to work on the Glendale Rose Float Association. And Edmund Burke said, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing." And I'm asking that we do do something. You are good men, and I think it's time that we reach out and correct some of the perceptions that are being had right now by the members of the public. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Nancy Kent, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale, and I would like to thank the council for having this on the agenda. I think that an ethics law such as Councilman Najarian and Mayor Draymond described would be very appropriate. And my last comment is to ask what the criteria are for solicitations for nonprofits being inserted into the Glendale Water and Power Bills, because every once in a while, we do receive a solicitation for the Rose Float Association with the utility bill. And I don't recall getting solicitations for other nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Margaret Hammond. Careful there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Margaret Hammond. You know, through many years, this is one of the best things for Glendale. There couldn't be better PR. And I can remember many of my family in Canada, they watch it, and particularly the year that I was on that float, it was very exciting. And when you're part of all that, it was very exciting. And we promoted several of our very wonderful landmarks in Glendale, like the Alec Theater, which I was part of saving, getting the city to assume the liability and hang on to that, and now the airport. I mean, these are things that are seen all over the world. And again, promoting our city as a very terrific, wonderful city to live in. And the rest of the residents in the city, they love that rose float. And I know I would be willing, and I know when the envelopes come in the utility, I think that's great, because you are involving all of the city. Everybody gets a utility bill, and if we want to be part of the city and the rose float, I think it's a great idea. I really do. I know that they say, "Well, that's a separate entity." Well, yeah, it is, but gee whiz, they are promoting our city. And as has been said, the young people are being involved, and I think that's terrific. We need every way we can to involve young people in things that make our city a better place to live in. That's my feeling. I think it's too bad if it's being tarnished by some things that are happening, and that hopefully that will end with whatever we need to do to end that feeling of that there's something going on that shouldn't be. But along the way, you've got to admit it, is there anything else worldwide we're seeing now? And people, as I said, my family call me, "What a great float." You know, they will call me on the day of New Year's Day and talk about it. So, that's all I have to say. And by the way, I did not pay $10,000 when I rode the float, I paid 500 because it was at auction, at Dreaming of Roses, and I had a ball. It was a blast. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing to do. And especially for me, I was, what, 75, 76 at the time, and it was a long day, but it was terrific. It was, and all the people along the way, all my friends waving and talking and, you know, taking pictures. So what I'm saying is, it does give us civic pride, and it's too bad, we don't, if we could keep it from being tarnished and made a bad thing, we have to think of it as a good thing. And the people that are from the rose float that work on it really deserve a big hand. They do a lot of work, put in a lot of hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. That's the last speaker card. Let me go back to my colleagues. If there are any issues related to the comments or questions, or any further directions, staff, Mr. Yusefian.
Okay. My understanding is the Rose Float Association is not a 501-C3, correct?
Let me get somebody up to the-
Okay, because it's a dash C4.
Come on up, and let's get your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. My name is John Gantis. I am a local attorney, and I also assist the Rose Float Association. I have with me Joyce Sokoloff, who is the president of the Glendale Rose Float Association. To answer your question, Councilmember Yusefian, that is correct, we are 501-C4. So I recall that's a mutual, it's a nonprofit mutual benefit is what that, pardon me? Fraternal benefit, excuse me. I don't get to speak for 24 minutes, so I lost the word.
Correct me, I think when the Rose Float Association was put together, at one point, and Mr. Howard, you can correct me also if I'm wrong, my recollection is, in those days, cities could not become nonprofits. So they created another body, so this way they would go out there and do the solicitation instead of the city being able to do the solicitation. No different than what they did with Glendale Clean and Beautiful. Neighborhood Services couldn't go out there and ask for money, but Glendale Clean and Beautiful could have done that. So it's an organization outside of the city, but it has ties to the organization. That was my understanding when it was created at one point. Is that correct?
I couldn't say what happened and the basis for its creation. The City of Glendale has its own tax ID number, and monies that are given to a city or any governmental agency are tax deductible under a different section of the Internal Revenue Code.
And since when we've had that?
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't.
Because I think that's recent.
I know, it's been at least 10, 15 years at a minimum, but the only reason I say that is because we actually looked at it when there was some fundraising going on, when Eileen Givens was involved, but it may have been significant number of years prior to that, I just couldn't say.
Okay. And the reason I bring this up, because a speaker said, "Why is it that this nonprofit is putting solicitation envelopes in the GWP, you know, billing? And do we also allow other nonprofits to do the same thing?" Now, the last time I checked, I think we did this for the library, don't we? The Friends of the Library? We do that. So, I think that's a policy issue that we need to clarify what it is. I know for nonprofits, we give a 25% discount and all that stuff. So, we need to clarify that policy issue because I think it's a legitimate question. But my understanding, based on the history that Ruth Dotson and Ginger Bremberg told me, is originally, city couldn't get it, so they created this, and that's how they were able to go out there and shake the tree and make some money and bring some of it to the City of Glendale. And that's how we ended up putting things on, different things. So it was kind of arm of the city, but it wasn't really arm of the city, type of a thing. My next question from the Rose Float Association is, there's rumors, there's no more Rose Float Association, I'd like to see, I mean, this is your chance to clarify a lot of those rumors. It's still alive?
Yes.
Functioning?
Of course.
Okay. Looking for members?
Always.
Okay. Looking for volunteers?
Anytime.
Okay.
Especially in December around Christmas, right after Christmas.
Right. So, and if they want to contact the Rose Float Association to be a member, to be a working member, or be on the Board of Directors, who do they call?
Me.
What's your phone number?
It's my home phone.
Okay. Don't call Mr. Gantis, you won't never get a hold of him.
You'll get a bill in the mail.
That's what happens. Okay.
You taught me that, Councilmember Najarian.
I think those are my, I understand you're going to continue to do what you did in the past. Would you be putting a function together to raise revenues?
We're going to have to look into it again.
Okay. Something similar, maybe not called Dreaming of Roses, but something else?
I'm not sure. We're, all of this has come about in the last month.
Okay, so you've got plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's my question.
Do you want me to clarify the utility bills?
Yeah, if you have a clarification.
The city has always allowed us, I've been on the board for almost 10 years, the city has always, it's always been, we print the utility bills, there's over 91,000 of them that go out. The city allows the Glendale Rose Float to do it in December, no, in November and December. The Friends of the Library does it two months before us, so that's, oh, October, September and October. So all it costs us is the printing of the, it generally, yeah, generally, we get enough funds to actually pay for the printing, but it's more for getting our name out and showing everybody the float. Yeah, PR.
Mr. City Manager.
Well, Mr. Mayor, on that point, and coming back to what was the question Mr. Najarian asked some time ago, obviously, Friends of the Library and Rose Float Association have had a special status and relationship with the city, and that's the plain and simple answer that goes back for many, many years, until more recently, when the question has arisen over the purpose of Dreaming of Roses and it not necessarily being 100% in support of the Rose Float Association. And the Rose Float Association has historically been 100% in support of the city putting forth a float in the Rose Parade. For that purpose, much like Friends of the Library, they have had a special relationship with the city. For that reason, they've been given entree to areas that every other nonprofit in the city wouldn't be given entree to, but the Rose Float Association has, and in much the same way the Friends of the Library have, because their sole purpose has been in benefit of the city's effort to put the rose float forward. That's the simple answer.
All right. Let me move on then. Do you have any further direction for staff, Mr. Yusefian?
No.
Okay. Let me move on to Councilmember Najarian. By the way, Councilmember Najarian, you did have some questions that are still hanging out there.
That's what I'd like to-
I didn't ask them because I knew we were going to you next.
Right. I mean, I'm no, I think I have a sense of fairness, and I'm no friend of Barry Allen's. We talk, we've had, we dispute each other more often than we say hello. But when he had the image of the city all on his website, we gave him hell. We gave him hell, we threatened him with legal action, if I'm not mistaken. Cease and desist, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to know, because it's confusing to this councilman, and I can imagine what it is to the public, how is it that we're permitting the City of Glendale logo on the website of a private organization that until a few months ago wasn't even a nonprofit organization?
I believe this is a question for our city-
Well, I think it actually possibly goes back to Mr. Starbridge's earlier point, the longstanding relationship of the Rose Float Association. Certainly, again, I saw that on the website, and I went and looked at it and saw it, and my first reaction was, unless it's been approved by the council, technically this is inappropriate. Somebody with a law, an organization with a longstanding relationship where essentially either by implication or otherwise, it's allowed to occur, it continues to occur.
Hold it, hold it. Don't talk about, this is the Rose Float Association. The website is the Dreaming of Roses.
Oh, well, I understand.
Are we even that confused as to the relationship between-
No, no, my understanding is, when I looked at that website, the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated didn't put up that website. That website that we looked, that website that I looked at was not a website of Dreaming of Roses Incorporated.
Let me clarify one thing here.
Rose Float Association-
If I may.
-Dreaming of Roses website.
Let me clarify something.
That may add to the confusion.
I mean, perhaps, perhaps it adds to the confusion. I mean, and this is where I think we need to clarify the relationship between the city's wholehearted support for the Rose Float Association and this entity out there, Dreaming of Roses, the party, Dreaming of Roses, the corporation, Dreaming of Roses, I'm now a nonprofit corporation. I just want to know, I mean-
I think the simple answer to part of that, is probably the only simple part of it, is that the Glendale Rose Float Association had an event, it was called Dreaming of Roses. It then became an organization using that name. So the piece I think that the City Attorney is referring to, not the organization, but the event, and that is confusing. I agree with you, and that's part of what we're trying to clarify.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes, sir.
I just addressed that one little issue.
Of course, of course.
To be very clear, the event is exactly as you said, the Dreaming of Roses, it has been, and I believe, from a corporate opportunity standpoint, and you understand that, Councilman Najarian, it remains a Glendale Rose Float Association property. It was conceived while Mr. Weaver was on the board of the Glendale Rose Float Association. It is somehow morphed into this Dreaming of Roses Inc. by some unknown way that is yet to be, but it, just to be clear, it is, or was, should I say, and probably is if we were going to do it again, an event that was, its genesis and its proprietary interest is with the Glendale Rose Float Association, from a legal standpoint, at least in my interpretation of it.
However, the question still remains, the confusion still remains, even with that explanation, I accept it on its face, but the bottom line is, it's still confusing to the public. And it appears on our material, so that's why the question.
And let me just follow up. I mean, as directors, you've got a duty, fiduciary duty to your organization. You developed this great event called the Dreaming of Roses. Some other person, individual decides to go out and incorporate that name and turn it into an own, for at least two or three years, a profit, for-profit corporation. Don't you have a duty to say, "Hold it, hold it, that's our name, we started doing it first?" And wouldn't someone as a director of that Rose, Tournament, Rose Float Association, have a fiduciary duty not to take an intellectual property of that corporation and then take it for his own purposes? I mean, maybe we don't need to get into there, this is just a question out there. We're not an investigative body, I think that's clear, we don't want to get too far. But these are the things I have a problem with, that I would like the council to correct in some way or another.
May I respond?
Please.
Mayor Draymond, Councilmember Najarian, members of the city council. Those are frankly the issues that, why I became active again in the Glendale Rose Float Association, exactly the issues that you've espoused. These are issues that have been discussed and will continue to be discussed with the directors of the Glendale Rose Float Association. In my estimation, in my opinion, your analysis is right on in terms of the intellectual property, the corporate opportunity, the obligation, the fiduciary duties of members of the Board of Directors, and it's being considered as we speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I ask, Councilmember Najarian, do you have any further direction for city staff?
Well, let's get the seal off that website until this whole thing is cleared up.
You're a nonprofit, it's not a city.
Or any nonprofit, we should be-
And with your direction, we can certainly do that. We have a letter, as you know, as you mentioned, Councilmember Najarian, we have a letter that we can send out indicating that unless this council has approved the use of a city either impliedly copyrighted or city-created logo, it needs to come off.
I mean, you will also remember, there were times during elections when simply a photograph of a candidate standing near a squad car that had the logo on it became an issue. Yes, Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe this should come back to you as an addendum to our policy on how the city relates and supports to various nonprofit groups and what kind of discounts we give. But I think it would be a shame if it, through this process, if the relationship that we've had between the city and the Rose Float Association, because their sole purpose is nothing more than to support that float, that's the sole purpose of that organization, and yet people engaged in it, if through this process, that relationship were distanced. I think traditionally, that's been a very good productive one, but maybe those special groups, as I've mentioned, the Friends of the Library, whose sole purpose is to support the library, and a group like the Rose Float Association, whose sole purpose is to benefit the city and the production of the float, maybe those need to have some special definition under our nonprofit policy. If indeed, we're going to continue to have a group, and I can't think of any other groups besides those two, maybe there is one or more, but I doubt it, maybe if they need to be spelled out specially, they should, so they can continue to have special treatment.
Well, let me suggest that at least the desire of this member of the council, and I don't think I'm the only optimist up here, but I, my goal is that through part of this process, we're going to strengthen that relationship with regard to the rose float itself and the Glendale Rose Float Association. I'm certainly willing to consider, as one individual up here, what you're saying, Mr. City Manager, but I think that, given the circumstances, we need to get there through a process, so that we more clearly understand that, and so the public clearly understands it. So I don't necessarily have an objection to that, but I think we need to figure out what our policy is and how we got here, and some of that's going to be coming back from our City Attorney in the form of a ordinance, so. Was there, is there anything further, Mr. Najarian?
Question. When a seat on the rose float is auctioned for 500 or 10,000, where does the money go? Does it come to the Rose Float Association?
Yes, always.
Directly?
No, not directly. It goes into the Dreaming of Roses account. It did go into the-
Dreaming of Roses Inc. or Dreaming of Roses Party?
Dreaming of Roses. Dreaming of Roses has a 501-C4. Dreaming of Roses Inc. is 501-C3. Well, I'm sorry.
She's getting, no, I don't blame her.
The money went into, let's be clear about this, the event prior to 2008, there was in existence an account- The event prior to 2008, there was, there was in existence an account of the Glendale Rose Float Association named Dreaming of Roses. The money would go into that account, and it was ostensibly, the accounting and the monies in years past have been transferred, or some of them, I don't know about all of them, but certainly a large portion of them, have been transferred to the Glendale Rose Float Association. The income was, and expenses were reported as part of the Glendale Rose Float Association tax returns that were filed.
And that's not uncommon, by the way.
No. But the account was maintained, just to be clear, the account was maintained under the name of Glendale Rose Float Association with its EIN number, but was with signatures that included Mr. Weaver, I'm not sure who else, but it was not necessarily under control of the Board of Directors. It would be something that was fed to the Board of Directors, and that's not to say anything other than a factual situation. That's not to imply any, anything that was bad about that. That is a set of facts. It's not to be stated to be bad, because there's nothing that I've ever seen that says that it is a bad situation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero.
My first question is for Mr. Gantis. He said, he used the term "I've become active." I mean, are you becoming active as a board member, or are you being retained as legal counsel?
Well, the term retained, I think you're assuming, I, now, as you may remember, Councilmember Quintero, members of the city council, I actually was the, not the forming, I wasn't quite that old, but I was the one that did the work to get a 501(c), we asked for a 501(c)(3) and indeed got the 501(c)(4). So I go back 20 years, 20-some years, but currently, I've just been asked to come back in and give some of my historical advice and act as a volunteer. I've been volunteering as an attorney. Now, whether that goes into a board member or not, that hasn't been discussed as yet.
Pro bono.
Pro bono's a good word.
Ms. Sokoloff. We want it on tape.
Lately, there's been a lot of that, Councilmember.
How many active members are currently part of the Rose Float Association that come to meetings and so forth?
Our board right now only consists of around 10 board members. As far as membership, we have around, I'd say about 60 people that actually come in, and for $25, you can have, you can be, become a member, you can get a newsletter, you can get a pin. There's different levels. Then we have the volunteers every year. We have over 400 volunteers. So it depends, they don't pay membership dues, but they're an active part in the Glendale Rose Float.
Okay. And then, as you heard me talk about reaching out to different, you know, other service clubs or service clubs or youth groups, working with the Arts and Culture Commission, what Mr. Draymond suggested in terms of some of the artists here in the city, commercial artists, people working for Disney and DreamWorks, I mean, don't you think that's a good idea? Don't you think that...
The Disney volunteers every year have one, have, I think it's, I'm sorry? There's around 40 or 50 of them. There's one day, I think it's on the 30th, that they come in. We have all of the high schools that volunteer to come in and decorate. We have any number of adults that continue to come back every year as crew chief, as, not crew chief, as, what are they called? They're not crew chief. Assistance. They, their knowledge every year of how to decorate the float is something that we, I don't know how to decorate a float. So there's a lot of people, it's just not membership.
Well, yeah, that's not, I mean, the membership is always good. I used to be a member and paid and I...
Membership is down from where it was. There's not...
But it's not just about membership. I think it's just including, including community members at large, and specifically, I mean, the idea, are you familiar with the Arts and Culture Commission of the city?
No.
Arts and Recreation, you are, because you present.
Of course.
I just think both of those entities can contribute, and I think they'd be excited, especially Arts and Culture. I think they'd be very excited to get involved with the Rose Float. This is something they haven't done in the past.
We've had contributions in the past from these people.
Mm-hmm.
So it's...
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero, anything further in terms of direction to city attorney?
Well, in general, I'm going along with the comments that were, that were made about an ordinance and so forth.
Okay. A question, by the way, that Councilmember Najarian raised, and I'm not sure you can answer this, that didn't get answered relates to GWP. That's an issue that's come up a couple of times. Can somebody explain as best they can? And if they can't, it's all right, too. We'll eventually get an answer, but I'd like to know if there is an answer related to how it is that a city department is contributing and under what auspices and so on.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me try. It arises under the GWP's sponsorship of a number of different activities in the city. Again, in the context of the Dreaming of Roses being a supportive arm of the Rose Float Association, certainly if it's restructured, as seems to be expressed in tender... If it's something different than that, then that casts a totally different light on it. But in the historical context of Dreaming of Roses being a supportive arm of the Rose Float Association, which I think is the impression that every department, the employees who are active with the group, that's how they have seen it in the past, that's been the history, once again, given some special dispensation to do things that every other nonprofit wouldn't necessarily be able to do. GWP's contributions, there have been requests made of GWP, filled out on forms like other groups make requests. I've been told that in a given year, GWP will make contributions in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000 in sum, small amounts to various groups who make requests, everything from water to direct money contributions. Dreaming of Roses has made their request in the same form, and they were approved for $5,000. And that has continued for the life of Dreaming and Roses, and I assume that money goes to support that cause, and as a result, the Rose Float. Once again, that contribution, you know...
I think it's since 2000 from my...
Since 2000?
Yes, since my discussion with GWP folks.
I'd like to, I'm sorry.
May I follow up on this?
Absolutely.
But, Mr. Starber, don't we ask what corporate status they have? Profit or nonprofit?
We do.
Giving money to the Red Cross is different than a for-profit corporate...
Yeah, there's a form that's filled out, and that's requested on there.
We do ask.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, and to be perfectly candid, I'm not certain if the representatives of the agency seeking the funds or the in-kind contribution, if you will, is actually filling out the form, or if it's staff that fills out the form in response to questions.
I saw the forms that were filled out for Dreaming of Roses, and they were, they were filled out by the representative of Dreaming of Roses. It's our form, we ask the question, they fill in the information so the staff can make a determination whether it fits GWP's protocol for making some kind of a contribution or in-kind water contribution. In this case, the form was filled out, the box was checked, the information provided. The purpose, at least in the most recent forms that I've seen, were for the specific purpose of supporting the Rose Float Association and development of Glendale's Rose Float.
Okay. Let me ask one other question that I think was left hanging out there, or comment. My notes tell me it was Councilmember Yusefian who asked the question, or made the comment. There's this issue or story that I, many of us have heard, and it relates to the issue of money in an account or funds in an account for which the Glendale Rose Float Association was penalized by the IRS. You mentioned that. Can we get just a brief clue in on that so we can...
Uh, Mr. Carnahan.
It is a pervasive story, and...
Right.
Mr. Carnahan, even though we all know you, could you state your name?
My name is Rob Carnahan.
Thank you.
Where do you want to start?
Well, let's start by stepping in front of the microphone and...
Need to be here, right in the microphone. What had happened over the years, you know, I've been decorating the floats for 21 years now. It was way back, and we had a great organization those days, and we've gone through the different things. But really, the penalty, you're talking about the penalty?
Yeah.
IRS penalty. We had a fiscal year that ended in September, which was a strange year. Then we had a treasurer later on that decided to file in July. But we got, you know, then we got a, we got a letter from the IRS that, you know, we weren't filing the correct dates. But we got penalized for that because we went over on the date that we were supposed to file our tax return. So then I went through a whole process. I said, "The thing to do now, I'll feel much more comfortable, talk to the board, that we'll have our tax date start on January the 1st." So I began to file the reports that requested from the IRS, we could file our tax returns, change our date to January the 1st. Unfortunately, they went back to November, and they said, "You can't do that. You have to file a short term from November to January, and then we'll reestablish..." Am I getting too complicated here?
I don't think so.
Okay. So this, this whole, and this took, this took four or five years to get all this worked out, and over that period of time, we went into some periods where we were penalized. I wrote a letter to the IRS, and I think every penalty was excused by the IRS, but we did receive a letter that did penalize. But I wrote a letter, that I explained the whole process. We were trying to get a fiscal year we could all understand, we could live within, and they returned saying that they excused all penalties.
All right. Let me ask you a very direct question, then. The story that seems to be ever pervasive, that one of our council members acting on behalf of Dreaming of Roses opened up his own bank account using your EI number, did fundraising, those funds were in that account, didn't inform you, IRS, you filed your report, the IRS came back and said, "What about these other funds?" You were unaware of it, and you were penalized. Correct or incorrect?
Let me get the right date now. I think it's been, we've been nine years...
Eight. It's going to be...
About 2000. The ninth year, the ninth year is when the Dreaming of Roses was formed. Initially, that first year, the Glendale Rose Float Association was the treasurer. We received all the funds, and I filed all the papers on that. The next year, there was, there was a separation at that time, on the second year. They collected all their funds, and I had difficulty. Your treasurer was...
Yeah.
I had a very difficult time getting this information from...
It doesn't matter what is...
Yeah, anyway, I had a great time, you know, I never got a report, so I had to file a tax return only on the information I had available, which was not accurate. It didn't have all the funds because I didn't have that report from Dreaming of Roses.
Right. So the bottom line is, it's not, was not to the satisfaction of Dreaming of Roses, I mean, Glendale Rose Float Association, this was not a runaway account?
Oh, no.
Some secret funds, et cetera. Okay. That explains it, I think.
We just, there was an awful lot of problems with the new date, and then once we, the Rose Float Association, the Glendale, the Dreaming of Roses started, had funds established in that relationship with the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carnahan.
Mr. Carnahan, that raises a question for me. So starting in 2001, a new account was set up for Dreaming of Roses for that particular event.
The first year, we worked, we were joint.
Right. It was joint, but then a separate account, right?
Yes.
I mean, I don't see anything odd or whatever about that. That seems to be okay, a separate account for this separate event. Now, throughout the years, from 2001, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, did the Rose Float Association get an accounting of that account? I mean, did you know how much money came in and how much money was spent?
Let me answer that, my part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Because...
You're first.
Because I, I was a treasurer, and I was responsible for filing all the necessary paperwork. The first year that Dreaming of Roses was in progress, I received all the funds. The second year, I didn't, and I was very concerned about tax liability. I was a treasurer, and on that year, I submitted my resignation because I was concerned about that relationship, not receiving, not being able to report to the IRS. I don't like to get into trouble with the IRS. So I resigned.
I think that's very wise.
Nobody likes that either.
And I was out of the loop, I was out of that loop for the next three years? Four years? And finally, the president asked me to come back, which I did, but I said I don't want anything to do with the treasurer.
Okay, well, then I guess my question's direct... Yes, it does, sir. My question's directed to Ms. Sokoloff. So does, did the Rose Float Association during that period of time, did you know how much money was coming into the account?
Yes. We have to pay tax, well, we had to bring it forward for the IRS. Every year, we did taxes. There was always a statement of where, of where the funds came in, came out, who gave. There was always...
From the Dreaming of Roses account.
From the Dreaming of Roses, yeah.
You got a full accounting of the...
Correct.
Of the ingress...
We still have any of those on file, too.
And you still have them on file.
Of course.
Very good.
Okay. Any further comments, and if so, please, let's keep them brief. We need to move on.
Couple of things. One, I want to make sure, I don't care what the organization is, what relationship we have, we should not have city logos on the website unless there are Neighborhood Services, it's Public Works, it's Attorney, or anything like that. So regardless of the relationship, we should not be using our logos on that purpose, one. Two, on the issue of seats on the float, I think the best thing is, since the float belongs to City of Glendale, we signed the contract with the builder, any seats that are sold on the float, check should be made directly to City of Glendale. This way, there is no questions. We don't have to worry about it, and they will collect it, they will collect it instead of writing the check to Rose Float Association. They will still do your fundraising and all the stuff, but those particular seats, when they are sold, the checks should be made to City of Glendale. Period. It belongs to the City of Glendale. That's, that float belongs to City of Glendale. If they are going to give the same, if I write the check for $500 for that float, like Margaret did, whether she writes the check to the Rose Float Association, Dreaming of Roses, or City of Glendale, if those two organizations were going to give the money to the city, would make no difference. Would make no difference. It's not charitable, they can't write it off because it's not a 501(c)(4), (c)(3). They can't write it off. Unless it's a (c)(3), you can't write it off. So maybe it would be better if we use the city's nonprofit number so they could write those off.
Let me get a response because I'm seeing a lot of head shaking out here and see what the concern is.
Well, my main concern is then, the money that we give every year, how are we going to, I mean, do we just take off $500 from Margaret and go, "I'm sorry, but we're only going to give you 44,000, 500"?
Yeah. That's fine. Give me credit for it.
I'm not too sure in the next few years that we're even going to be able to auction off the seats.
Mr. Starber. It just seems to me that, again, the relationship with the Rose Float Association, and I'm somewhat discounting Dreaming of Roses because it sounds like it may be getting into other ventures, but in a relationship with the Rose Float Association, it seems to me, we want to continue to nurture the kind of relationship we've had in the past. They continue to be completely supportive of the Float Association and us. Can we work out those kinds of details with the Rose Float Association if in the future there's ever going to be a sale or auctioning of the seats?
And, Mr. Mayor...
If I can, because somebody has to manage that. It does need to be part of some kind of a fundraiser, and that would be, that would be the Rose Float Association or whatever, whatever group or fundraiser they're using.
And I don't have a problem with that. The only problem is, the city attorney just created the problem by saying they are not affiliated with the city. We have no auditing rights, so, and this is where it, I mean, this is a commodity, okay? We create this commodity. This is the float. There are seats on the float that the city pays for. Now, they go auction these seats off, and I have no idea how much money they raise by selling these seats. They may raise 20,000, they may raise 50,000, 60,000. I have no idea, because I have no access to their books due to the fact that it's a separate organization. So if they raise $60,000... So if they raise $60,000, building on the float that we, the taxpayers, are paying $90,000 to build and then in the end of the year come and say, "Okay, here's your $45,000", there is nothing, there is no memorandum of understanding, there is no, uh, understanding that they're going to give us that. I mean, this is the, I mean, we need to organize this so we don't get into another hole.
I think you've made, I think you've made your point, Mr. Yusefian. Um, and what I'm gonna ask is if this will be an issue that you will bring back because I, I, I know I disagree with that. I don't know if there are other council members that do, but the bottom line is, we'll need to make some kind of a vote based on that issue if we would like to vote on that, so...
And I think it's an important issue, Mr. Mayor, and the relative to the relationship the city has with any nonprofit, whether it's Dreaming of Roses or something else, where they voluntarily bring funds forward. And again, whether it's a, it's a relationship that I have to tell you, the city attorney, with all due respect, the city attorney did not create. This has been something that's been in existence for a long time.
I know, but you said that we can't audit.
Well, I didn't say we couldn't audit, I said we can't invest in it.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we're off topic, okay? We are off topic.
And I would like to, I would be happy to bring that back after talking with city manager and the Rose Float Association to determine some options for you so you can decide what kind of a relationship you want with them.
Bottom line is, with regard to that issue, we're gonna have to vote, debate that and vote on it.
I would consider it too.
We can't do it here and now. So, so let's, let's bring that back as well, as an issue. Okay.
Is that it?
I don't know. I'm about to find out. Is that it?
If that's it, then I'd like to say so.
Mr. Weaver, uh, the floor is yours.
I don't care to get into debate after I speak. I've listened. Now it's my turn. I don't think we ought to be getting into debate on all this. My years on council, I've been involved in three things that I care very much for. It gave me personal satisfaction that were for the benefit of the community of Glendale. I did Weaver's Doghouse, adopted out over 1,000 animals in four years, one of the highest rated shows in Glendale. Gave me a lot of satisfaction to see these poor animals getting homes that they otherwise wouldn't have got. Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Cantaro concluded I was using that for political gains. In my own heart, I know I was not. I was doing it for the community. I still get, people come up with their dogs, they remember this dog, it's on my show and was adopted. I decorate the Rose Float. I've been on the Rose, was on the Rose Float Association some 15 years ago. I've worked on the float for 15 years now, crew chief for the last five or six years. I came up with the idea of giving community service hours to the school. And whereas when I started back in 93 with the Whale's Tale, um, there was not many from Glendale, the Pedal Pushers from Lutheran Church did most of the float decorating at that time. When I created the, um, idea for community service hours, I personally went to all the high schools and rounded up, we started to average over 600 student volunteers a year. In all my years, I've never turned away an adult volunteer. I've had them come from Washington, the East Coast. In fact, I'm so grateful to one that came from the East Coast last year, wanted help on the float. If you remember, there was a map of Europe on that. And he showed me a whole new technique on how to create the mountains out of seeds. So grateful. Approximately 23 floats that are done by Phoenix Decorating. I'm the only crew chief that is not paid. I do it all voluntarily. I average over 100 hours a year to do that. And I want to continue to expand it. When I get good people, I hung on to some that had started in eighth grade and I watched them go clear through college and they come back. Um, the, the effort put in, it's not so much winning the trophy. What I'm always proud about is for the kids because the kids watch that on New Year's Day. And I know what they're doing at home when they see if we get a trophy. They're jumping up and down and says, "I worked on that. Boy, did you see that part? I did that." It's not bringing the picture in in April and putting it up and saying governor's trophy, the mayor's trophy, uh, the volunteer trophy. No. It's the kids that, some that put in, I've had student volunteers put 60, 80 hours. And most of those kids, a lot of them are honor students and are totally involved in their school activities. Come and they do it every year. So I've never turned away anybody from working on the float. The third thing I've done is Dreaming of Roses. When I got on the board back in the early 90s, we're trying to figure out how to raise money. It was formed in 77, I think it was post Prop 13, there was talk of the city might do away with the float. So, um, some business leaders, the community bankers, whatever, put together the Rose Float Association to help raise money to offset the cost back to the city. When I got involved in 90s, I kept trying to figure out a hook, an idea that would generate more money than $2,000 or $3,000 a year. I came up with this idea and in a committee meeting of 19 members back in the year, February of 2000, uh, the, those 19 members agreed by consensus, let's call it Dreaming of Roses. Back, the person that coined it was Ray LeBlanc, wife of the city engineer Lou LeBlanc. Each year, I had the president of the Rose Float Association on the committee. All our decisions were made by consensus of the group. When you start something out, first year, you never know if it's gonna even take. Let's do a fundraiser for the Rose Float. Oh, let's bring in some food and, uh, entertainment and, uh, let's find a good place like Dreamworks to do it in and see what happens. It could have been total failure. So you can call it a committee, but a committee might have lasted one year. Well, it made some money. And by in the second year, my thinking process was, while the Rose Float Board was raising money, Dreaming of Roses was starting to raise money too. And I wanted to keep in a separate accounting of the revenue coming in, the expenditures going out on Dreaming of Roses itself. So we could see how we're doing, what was the debt? And that debt go over to the Rose Float Board. That was done with the concurrence of the president of the Rose Float Association, Paul Estep. He and I signed at that time. And we proceeded down that road with Dreaming of Roses getting bigger every year. In 2005, um, I started the incorporation process due to reasons I won't discuss. And at that time, what I wanted badly was a full-time CPA. I got one. I have never signed a check since that time, it was handled by my CPA and I had legal advice at the same time. When I said I wanted to use the word Dreaming of Roses because our committee had created it back in 2000, I got legal advice. It was told, "Yes, you could." The state of California granted me the title or granted Dreaming of Roses, Inc. as a, an organization because it did not exist in the state of California at the time. So I legitimately got it and I had legal advice and so doing. Since that time, I've waited to try to get a 501(c)(3). And I discovered before I even started that, that the Rose Float Association could not get a 501(c)(3) because their sole purpose was giving money to the City of Glendale for the float. That would not follow the criteria for a (c)(3). When I, and when I, by the time I did it in 2005, I also realized that Dreaming of Roses was starting to generate more net revenue than we needed to give to the city. I was in the impression that the Rose Float Association gave half the cost of the float and, and right on the city, on a, on the side of the process, City of Glendale. City of Glendale should be putting something in. The Rose Float giving half of it back. And we're giving extra, what do we do with the extra money? The Rose Float Association couldn't do anything else with the money except start stockpiling it in CDs or whatever. So if I went to a (c)(3), by definition, I had to do more than just give it to the float. I've sat here for 12 years and there's been so many organization groups that have come in here and asked for $2,500, $3,000 to keep them going, um, here all the time. Uh, there's the roles, uh, the Fourth of July fireworks, that's on the agenda coming up. The Christmas parade. All of these groups could use a little money. The schools could use it, the bands, the orchestras, the, I remember talking to Coach Glendale High School football team, new uniforms, don't have any money, a way to raise it. Under the mechanism that we were setting up under Dreaming of Roses, Inc., we could. The whole theory behind it was, if and when the Rose Float could not provide it, it's written right in our bylaws, we will pick it up and we will make sure that the Rose Float is always funded in the city. But the other monies, over and above, as it grows, would go to the community. Nobody on the Dreaming of Roses, Inc. will receive a single dollar. The board, we do it all voluntarily. The, um, board, it's been said that I can do whatever I want with it. No. Not, not on a 501(c)(3) with the board. The board has to approve where the funds go to. And that was the whole intent. I've sat here and doesn't do a lot, I don't want to go in a lot of detail, but I've been told I'm evil, I'm corrupt, I should resign from the city council. I've had character assassination done to me and I can't defend it. Uh, anybody can get up and make accusations. What am I supposed to do? I mean, I'm hearing, I'm going on aggressively, doing things. I can sit here and say I don't, but if that is true, well, what can I say? I've been accused of everything, including contributing to the death of a, of a lady back in 97. So I've seen and heard it all. Yeah, that's true. I sat here and...
Heard that one.
Oh, yes. You didn't return a phone call, the lady, and she died and it's your fault, Mr. Weaver. You killed her. So I've heard everything. Um, go on and on. The one thing, the website, I did not maintain the website, that was done by Dreaming of Roses group. Uh, we furnished over every penny that was earned up through the last Dreaming of Roses, every single penny, over $123,000 was turned over to the Rose Float Association and the checkbook and we closed the account. No longer exists, Dreaming of Roses. I signed the paper and I faxed it in, Sokoloff. Um, the website should be terminated because it no longer exists. I've not set up a website for Dreaming of Roses, Inc. And we may be in formulation of doing another Dreaming of Roses. If there's any money in, it'll be returned if we don't do it. Our bank account is virtually empty. We had a few checks come in, they're not being cashed, they're being held. So, gonna try to do it. But I thought I was doing, as my job as a councilman, I was doing a good thing and trying to help my community, whether it be animals, the float, or the community. And if my colleagues feel that that is not proper and they will put handcuffs on me and cut me back so I can't get the volunteers, so be it. The community is the one that's gonna be hurting, not me. And for the people that think I'm intimidating, I'm intimidating you to give money, to give back to the city, to the people, every dollar stays in the City of Glendale. It doesn't go anywhere. That's, or at least it will in the future with, uh, Dreaming of Roses Incorporated. If that's a bad thing, then punish me. District attorney's not investigating me. I'd like to know what the IRS is gonna investigate since I haven't raised a dollar, haven't done anything yet, so they're gonna investigate me already? My God, I only got it three, four months ago. And if FPPC wanna get me on ethics, go for it. They're not gonna find anything. I conscious is good. I can go home and go to bed at night. But I've tried to help this community and I've sat here and listened to four colleagues think I'm doing a number on all of you. And that makes me sad, but I will abide by their decisions, how many constraints they would have put on my organization to try and do good for you in this community. Thank you.
By the way, gentlemen...
We go again.
I'd like to have this, the last round of comments. We do need to move on.
Well, my only comment, and I appreciate your, uh, your comments, Mr. Weaver, my, my only comment is that the dog show continues.
It does.
It does, right. So I don't, I want the public to understand, even though Mr. Weaver no longer hosts it, it does continue.
It's still at the park.
And thousands of pets have been, uh, adopted.
Absolutely.
And that situation ended with the arrest of one of the workers at the Glendale Humane Society. Uh, the entire staff basically was fired or resigned. It ended with a total overhaul of the nonprofit. They lost their contract with the city. We actually had the contract with the Pasadena Humane Society. And now, and it has been for a few years now, the Glendale Humane Society is in good shape, it's a normal nonprofit, it's doing quite well. We know, both Mr. Draymond and I know some of the officers, so I just wanted to make that clear. It wasn't just about taking Mr. Weaver off of the, of that particular show, it was about the issues that were taking place at the Glendale Humane Society. And the vote was four to zero. Uh, so just wanted to set the record straight because people, people forget, uh, exactly what took place back there. And incidentally, it all started here at Oral Communications. The first time that person, actually the second or third time even, that that person came to the podium and began to talk about the issues at the Humane Society, I thought to myself, "Man, she's crazy. It can't be. It can't be going on. We have a contract with him, the police department is involved, it can't be going on." Well, guess what? Months later, we found out that it was, that it was a fact.
Question for Mr. Weaver, if you'd like to answer it. Did I hear you say that you dissolved the Dreaming of Roses Incorporated?
Dreaming of Roses is, is, I guess technically still a committee of the Rose Float Association, but since I now own the name legally, with all respect to Mr. Candace, and this, I have heard the Rose Float Association is gonna sue me. So is that another wild rumor, if they're gonna do it? I don't know. Uh, I can't do anything about that, but it is a name, a name and name only. I mean, there's nothing there.
But you, you said you ended it, I'm just saying, are you saying you dissolved the corporation or you...
Oh, no, it was a committee. It was simply a committee and I took the committee over and I incorporated a business and the committee is in Dreaming of Roses now. None of, none of the members of the committee, other than the president of the Rose Float Association, was on the board. It was a separate committee of 35 people.
Can you understand my confusion?
I understood your confusion.
As to the names and...
You know, in, in retrospect, it would've been much easier if I changed the name to something mildly different to Dreaming of Roses. But since it, since I got legal advice and said I could do it, the name was connected with the event, so I kept the name. And hindsight is golden. You can say, "Well, no, why don't you call it Dreaming of Glendale or, or something else?"
Dreaming of Daisies.
It could've been anything.
Dreaming of the...
But that's hindsight.
Daisies.
I didn't do it. I can obviously go in for a name change. I assume, I, I don't have an attorney here, I could go in and say, "I'd like to change the name of Dreaming of Roses, Inc. to something else." I suppose I could do that. I haven't asked that one yet. But I'd like to and they can have the name Dreaming of Roses, let's see what they can do with it.
All right. Mr. Yusefian, anything?
Uh, I'd just like to know, uh, from the city attorney, uh, what type of directions, because this is what, what kind of directions you're taking back and what are you gonna come back with?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate that question. One, I think I'm hearing a consensus from the council for an ordinance, whether one describes this as an ethics ordinance or, or otherwise, it would be an ordinance that would limit the ability... the ability of sitting city council members who also sit on, whether it's nonprofit, for-profit, or other entities where they have an ownership interest of 10% or more, or they're a managing director and officer. I'm going to actually mirror some of the language you find in FPPC regulations from soliciting contributions. I also heard some language about also aggressive solicitation, but if, whether or not that's necessary, if you restrain them from solicitation of entities or individuals who are doing business or have contracts with the city, I'm not sure whether you need to have an ordinance that would also restrict aggressive solicitation, but I can do them both.
I would like to...
That's one.
As I said, I, I don't have an issue with a council member go out there and says, you know, I'd like to donate some money to City of Hope. You know, I have no problem with that. So long as you don't continue to call that person and harass them. The second thing is, I do not, I do not, I do not think it's appropriate for a council member to go ask even that question from, let's say, a developer who has a project in front of us, or...
It would seem that that ordinance, as described, would preclude that anyway.
Yes, right. Okay. So that's going to be covered.
Really, the only question I have is, is there a consensus for additionally, an aggressive solicitation?
No, then because just any solicitation.
It will.
That's going to cover it.
The second question I have, and again, I will appreciate Mr. Yusefian's question about direction, is on the, the issue of the, of the city-designed logo. I, I heard a couple of council members note that we, we need to get those removed from websites unless they have the express permission of the city. I'm not sure I heard a majority want to do that. If I'm hearing that, will, I see one thumbs up if I...
For myself, the Rose Float has Mr., I agreed with Mr. Starber a little earlier. The Rose Float has a unique relationship with the city, so I don't have a problem with them continuing.
I think the problem is, Mr. City Attorney, there needs to be a process and a policy. And before you have a policy. And part of the issue is that there's a lot of, a lot of things that are going on through tradition and practice that this council is unaware of. And, and it's therefore open to interpretation by the public, by these council members, by the press, and the organizations involved themselves. So I, it's not that I want to say, and this was trying to say before when Mr. Starber raised his, it's not that I want to say the Rose Float Association shouldn't be able to, to use that logo. It's that before we get to that point, I think we need some clarification, we need a firm policy. So for example, the word, the words I think you mentioned, without some sort of permission or oversight or something, there needs to be a process rather than it just evolves. So that's, that's the problem. So I think, I think what you're hearing is a consensus to have a, a process or a policy defined.
And that actually was going to be my third question, I guess, and maybe I don't need to put the, the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse, either way. Then really the question is, do we want to compel them to remove the logo now while we develop that policy or just let things stay status quo as we develop the policy and bring it back?
From the Dreaming of the Roses Inc., yes. The Rose Float Association, I think we need to have a policy. And, and the reason is, when this council's gone and its new council comes in and none of us are here, you're not here, we're all retired, are gone, and the same question comes up, somebody can come up and say, there was a resolution passed by the city council in 2008 that says the Rose Float Association is allowed to use the thing.
I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is status quo and bring back a policy.
Right. I think there's a clarification.
Dreaming of Roses Inc. does not have a website and I did not monitor or create the Glendale Rose Float, Dreaming of Roses website. I gave input to it.
I think the, the point is, Mr. Weaver, it...
And I'm not planning to put City of Glendale on it unless I came back here as a 501(c)(3) and asked the city to be a co-sponsor.
I think the point is that...
And then there was a policy that would allow me to put it on.
I think the point is, it's not so much as directed at you, what you did or didn't do, as much as...
Oh, yeah, I understand.
As much as...
A general.
A general.
Understand.
There you go.
Understand.
There is the confusion, as Councilmember Najarian pointed out, because you have an event that has the same name as an organization. And so, so therefore, we need to clarify.
And then unless I hear any objection, maybe it's a better way to put it, I'll work with the city manager and we'll, we'll start working on putting together a team to put together a policy and bring it back.
All right. I have, just want to clarify one thing. My friend and my colleague, Mr. Quintero, the Glendale Humane Society did not lose its contract with the city, by the way. And that keeps being repeated.
Chose not to...
A new board of directors took over, a new organization grew up, and they opted while they were getting their act together, reformulating that organization, not to involve themselves in a, even a contract proposal with the City of Glendale. And they have maintained that position ever since and they've been immensely successful and are highly respected and to this day are the only no-kill shelter in the region. Just as a clarification.
I have a quick question from the Soakaloff and anyone else. Would you be interested in a member of the Parks and Rec Commission or a member of Arts and Culture to serve on your board? If one of the volunteers, I think that would be great.
George Chapchan already is on the board.
He's a staff member.
He's part of the board.
Excuse me, which organization is he with?
Parks and Rec.
Oh, Parks and Rec, that's right.
Yeah. He's a staff member. But would you be interested, say, Arts and Culture, for one of the commissioners?
Of course. Anybody, anybody can come to the board meeting and...
All right, Mr. City Attorney, you have your...
So long as they pay their 25 bucks, right?
Clarification on your...
Yes, sir. I think I've, I think I've got good direction, counsel, thank you.
Take the motion with those understanding.
There's a motion at 7(c)(2) to direct staff.
And that was a direction.
Mr. City Clerk, please.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
I think I'll abstain.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. I would just like to add something, Mr. Weaver. When you're counting up council members here, please don't add me into a list of people that is beating you up. I have tried to take every opportunity...
And you said beating you up.
Well, handcuffing you. I believe that was the term. I'm not trying to handcuff you or anybody else. I'm trying to chair a meeting in, with a couple of really delicate issues and trying not to damage people's reputations, yours or anyone else's. And, and that is not easy to do. When I ran for council, I never assumed this is the kind of thing I would be dealing with.
Same here.
Well, then, so please don't add me into that category.
Okay, sir.
I have a great deal of respect for what people do to support organizations in this city, nonprofit or otherwise, and that extends to you too, Mr. Weaver. Let's have the next item.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager, Mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you. We have a number of speaker cards. Let's start with Esther Schiller, followed by Marlene Gomez.
Arlene had to leave because she needed to go back to Inglewood and vote.
Okay.
So I will try to do for both of us. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of Glendale. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm the executive director of an organization called SAFE, which stands for Smoke Free Air for Everyone. We're funded by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health to work on the problem of drifting tobacco smoke in apartments and condominiums. We are aware that the city council will soon be examining this problem in some detail. And since we've been funded to work on this issue since the year 2000, we thought it would be helpful if we shared some information with you in advance. As you're aware, most apartment buildings allow smoking in units and outdoor common areas. Unfortunately, tobacco smoke can drift from one unit into other units and to other parts of an apartment building, and it can also come in from outside. A statewide survey of, in 2004, of over 600 apartment residents commissioned by the American Lung Association of California showed that 46% of respondents had experienced second-hand smoke drifting into their own apartment. 82% said, said they would prefer to live in a totally non-smoking apartment building or at least in the non-smoking section. So if the council made a decision to require smoking and non-smoking sections in apartment buildings, people who smoke could be accommodated and people who don't smoke and want to live in a non-smoking environment could also be accommodated. Most landlords at the current time don't know that they have the right to create non-smoking sections and non-smoking buildings, and most apartment residents hesitate to ask questions about non-smoking sections or non-smoking buildings for fear that they won't get the unit that they want. We have a special project on the internet which we call the Smoke Free Apartment House Registry, www.smoocfreeapartments.org. The website lists the vacancies of apartment owners who are regulating tobacco use in their buildings. We have approximately 320 apartment owners in California and across the nation, but we only have six owners or property management companies in Glendale that list their non-smoking vacancies with the registry. Considering the numbers of apartment buildings in Glendale, that's not very many. We have just conducted 250 surveys of apartment residents in Glendale to determine the percentage that would like to live in a non-smoking environment. We expect to present the analysis of those surveys when this issue's on your agenda. And there's another factor to be considered, and that is the number of adults and children who have chronic illnesses which could be made worse by daily exposure to tobacco smoke. In fact, there are more people with chronic illnesses than there are people who smoke. In the surveys we've conducted in other cities, approximately one-third of apartment residents report that their neighbor's smoke has drifted into their home in the past year. Approximately one-half of those will report that someone in their household has a chronic illness. Under fair housing laws, people with chronic illnesses like asthma, heart disease, diabetes, cancer, are entitled to a reasonable accommodation so they can use and enjoy their unit. But unless there are non-smoking sections or non-smoking buildings, there is really no place that these adults and children can be safe from tobacco smoke. It's ironic that if you stay in a hotel for one or two nights, you'll be given the choice of a smoking or non-smoking room. But if you apply for an apartment, a place that you may live in for years, you do not have that choice. There should be a choice, and we hope at some point the city council will provide that choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. Councilmember Najarian, I really would like to thank you for your comments earlier, but when you made the comment about a favorite council member, when people ask me, I tell them it's you. So anyways, I also thank this council for bringing to an end, depending upon what happens with the ordinance, bringing to an end the issues that we have had regarding the Rose Float, and I do support that. But I want to touch on something else. The word secrecy is repugnant in a free and open society. And we are, as a people, inherently and historically opposed to secret societies, to secret oaths, and to secret proceedings. There's a quote from John F. Kennedy. "I request for city records regarding telephone usage and the calendar of Councilmember Weaver was turned down because of, 'The records you seek are privileged pursuant to the deliberative process privilege and will not be produced.'" We responded to the city attorney's office. Please be advised that Prop 59 changed that. Prop 59 will allow the public to see and understand the deliberative process through which decisions are made. In order to abide by a constitutional mandate, Governor Schwarzenegger turned over his calendar and continues to do so. From a press release of the governor, "Access to information about the conduct of the people's business is a fundamental right that we must preserve at all costs." In order for California to truly be the Sunshine State, we need broad compliance with the California Public Records Act. We are launching an effort to provide training to state officials who in turn will be required to train their staff. Open government has long been a priority for Governor Schwarzenegger. He is the first sitting governor to open his daily official state calendar for public inspection. In December of 2004, released a 350-page document with details of his meetings with staff and legislators, information about various public policy briefings, and listings of daily activities. Since then, he has made his official state calendar public, updated on a bi-weekly basis. The governor strongly supports Prop 59, a successful 2004 measure that amended California's constitution to further access of records by requiring the state to broadly construe information requests. He has also encouraged the legislature to follow suit by adopting changes in the Legislative Open Records Act that support the goals of Prop 59. It's time for Glendale to become less secretive and follow the constitution. In the long run, it will save expensive Public Records Act litigation. The last one cost the city about $16,000. And with that, gentlemen, I would like to, I have copies of the press release from Governor Schwarzenegger, and I call upon this council to direct the city attorney's office to be more open with requests for public records and to look at what the state of California has done and to regulate the state of California in those record requests. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Margaret Hammond, followed by Rita Unikian.
Well, can I have my nap on the dais, as the cartoon showed me? Good evening again, Mayor Draymond.
Good evening.
And the council staff and the public. My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm speaking for myself, okay?
Speaking to the attorney.
Not for any homework, for myself. As a 50-year resident of this city, I stand before you this evening with a bloody but unbowed head. I would take my hat off to show you, but I haven't combed my hair today. After the last few times that I spoke or was at this podium, there was some very, shall I say, nasty words spoken, and unfortunately, I had left because by a couple of city council about not knowing what I was talking about or blah, blah, blah. The people that came up were, that the person, in other words, it seemed it was referring to me, and some other people who came up because we were complaining about the increase in the water and power and particularly now the trash, of course, and, and about the transferring of GWP funds. $95 million in five years, especially when there was work needed to be done on the infrastructure. We were complaining because we felt that it should be brought to the attention of everybody that there were, there was a problem here with these funds being transferred and then turning around and increasing the rates for which the taxpayers and a lot of people who cannot afford it, seniors, with the increases, they're paying larger water, power, and now trash for their services, those services. for this, uh, for their services, those services, than they are for their taxes on their homes. Uh, this is really not good. It's not good at all. But, you know, I guess those, it's already been passed, and I guess there's nothing we can do about it. Uh, the other thing is the, the idea that we were called down for daring to come forward and speak before the city council. Uh, yes, if you, I, I had left. I was tired. I'd been here all day. Uh, but when I got home, uh, I got phone calls and so forth, and I never did watch it. I didn't feel I wanted to, uh, listen to that kind of castigation. Yes, there was. It was you, Mr. Najarian, and Mr. Yusefian that referred to us as, uh, you know, being here, and we didn't know what we were talking about, and we were giving the wrong information or whatever. And, uh, so I feel that I, I'm speaking to that matter, and I, whatever, it's fine. Um, now, the other thing that I do want to bring up, and I feel very strongly about, is the matter of smoking. Uh, I know in my apartments, I have no smoking. I just said flat out, no smoking. Number one, it's very beneficial in redecorating. My own mother lived in my apartments, and by the time she was there, a year, she was a chain smoker. Place had to be washed down before it could be painted. Um, and I have been in other situations, clubs, where they allowed tremendous amount of smoking, cost a lot of money, not only for redecorating, but for the air conditioning and so forth, kept breaking down because of the overuse of the, you know, due to smoking. So it is a benefit financially to do away with smoking if landlords would realize that. And then also, uh, the fire hazard, uh, because of course, and I think that maybe the fire insurance, or I mean, the insurance companies maybe should be giving, uh, some kind of a, uh, benefit to landlords that do have non-smoking facilities. Again, my mother was a terrible smoker, and, uh, it killed her. It's true. Uh, her breathing went out, and she died of a heart attack. God love her. She died, you know, that was what she wanted to do. But she did set fire to my apartments one time, and when she came to stay with me, um, in my home, she did again, fall asleep and let the cigarette go. And only that I have a keen sense of smell, we probably would have all gone up in flames. So as far as I'm concerned, saying no smoking is a great idea. I'm sure it's, uh, a lot of tenants would be very happy for the safety factor. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Rita Unikian, followed by Yegine Nazarian.
Hi, how are you?
Fine. How are you?
Thank you very much. My name is Rita Unikian. I have lived in Glendale since 1989. First of all, I am single parent and have volunteered at the Glendale schools for 12 years. The reason for, of my concern is to ask the city councilor members to please consider to looking into rent control, especially for all low income, uh, income resident in Glendale who are struggling to make a living. I have handout that I needed to distribute to Glendale resident to sign and support my cause. Excuse me.
Translate.
Iranasa.
Translate.
Huh?
What's being said is your English was perfect. There's no reason to translate it.
No.
No, your English is good.
I, okay, make it better. Check, translate. Iranasa, in, love councilor member.
She says she values the work that the council members are doing. And she's requesting help from the council member so, um, we can have a rent control for city of Glendale soon. Because, um, the reason for the request is because the rents are going up and the landlords are aware of the activities and are raising the rents. Um, she, uh, she's saying the, uh, last time, uh, there were numerous people were here to support her, and, uh, the reason today that aren't that many people is most of them are voting and... And you were, uh, you were also very busy with the meetings that, um, your agendas and... And they were late. Um, reasons concern is that the last time when they were here, um, because they were, um, there were a lot of elderly people, um, here, and they'd been called late, um, so they weren't able to stay, and they weren't able to speak to the city, and they're feeling that they're being ignored and they are being, uh, not being heard. Uh, Rita is also searching and looking for, um, a good attorney, um, for, um, for the petition. So she can put it in a ballot. Um, she is requesting that, um, the council takes, uh, take Rita and the work that she's doing serious, and, um, she feels like, uh, only signature is not enough. She needs more help from the council and, and the community. She's also appreciating the opportunity for her to be in here and be able to, um, speak to you. She's hoping there will be a light at the end of the tunnel for her. She's hoping that this issue will be resolved, um, soon enough. Uh, she also appreciates, again, uh, the work that the council is doing for the city of Glendale and, uh, opportunity for her to be here and expresses her concern.
Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Yegine Nazarian.
My name is Yegine Nazarian. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, um, this evening. I think this is a very important and evolving issue of rent control for the city of Glendale. I want to thank Rita Unikian for, um, her perseverance and effort that, um, she's doing for the community. My concern, and so many others, in the issue of increasing cost of living, especially rent, in the city of Glendale, and families who are also on a public assistance are having difficult time to meet their, um, goals. Um, the rent prices are, um, are on the rise. Gas prices are on the rise. Uh, myself in this situation, I also like to propose enforcement of rent control for this city. To help majority of families in this time of turbulent economic crisis, uh, I have yet experienced, um, in the past 30 years in this great city and country of ours. Um, I have also considered to move away from Glendale and find a city, a cheaper, uh, rents, lower rents, but I still have to drive back to the, uh, to Glendale. I've been working here for over 30 years. I've been serving the community for 30 years, and the, uh, the gas prices on the rise, sometimes it is, uh, cheaper to stay home and not go to work. So this is most of our concern. So with the help and support of Glendale community, such as yours, I'm hoping to bring, um, a light and, um, to the matter of rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last speaker is Abed Garakhanian.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city of Glendale, citizens. Uh, this is Abed Garakhanian. I am 76 years old, and I'm a citizen. Uh, you know, this year's everything is very expensive. And, uh, what can I do? Just we need the help of the city councils that is necessary for SSI people. They hope of you. You can do that. Try or make a rent control, please. That is good for low-income people. Behold of you, do that, please. We thank of you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that is our last speaker. Uh, we have, uh, comments from the council with regard to, or answers or direction, uh, related to oral communications. Councilmember Najarian.
Well, I want to address Margaret, who...
Go ahead.
Who was, who was, uh, addressing what she thought I said last week when she left the room, and who got that information secondhand from a friend of hers, and I think that information was wrong, even though she says she's coming down by herself and is representing herself. She claims I made representations to all of us. I'm not sure what Margaret was saying. Uh, Margaret has always welcomed homeowner groups, individuals throughout the city to come in and address me, address council. Uh, my remarks were not disparaging of their, uh, right to come and speak, nor of their, uh, thought process. My remarks were clearly reported in the newspaper several times. I repeated them to the homeowners coordinating council last night. Uh, they don't bear repeating again, but, uh, it's a two-way street, Margaret and anyone who's listening. Uh, I hope you'll respect my right to express my opinion, and even though we don't agree, doesn't mean that I'm insulting you or disparaging you or, uh, trying to intimidate you from coming to council to speak your mind. Now, I hope you watched the replay, Margaret, instead of listening to your neighbor translate what I just said, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Anyone else? Okay. Any other comments? Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just briefly, so the record is clear. This whole issue of the release of council telephone records and calendars, Proposition 59 categorically did not change the law relating to the, both, the deliberative, I shouldn't say both, the deliberative process privilege and any other privilege that exists under law relative to the Public Records Act. There are two older cases. One is the Rogers case, Rogers versus City of Burbank. The other is the Duque Mesian case, which specifically upheld the, uh, deliberative process privilege. If you read the text of Proposition 59 and you read the, uh, ballot arguments, both in favor and opposed to it, it specifically provides that it does not change any of the privileges, uh, outlined therein. The notion that the Public Records Act needs to be broadly construed has already been established by case law prior to Proposition 59. There was a recent case that just came down from the Court of Appeal in the last month, which once again reaffirmed that the deliberative process privilege is a viable privilege under the Public Records Act, either statutorily or Prop 59 constitutionally. I have sent this council a confidential memorandum, may have been before you were on the council, Mr. Mayor, that noted that some elected officials...
If it's confidential, aren't you breaching the confidentiality?
All I'm telling you is that what's in the, uh, press release here from the governor, the governor and other politicians are volunt, may voluntarily release the records if they so choose to do so, but they are not required to do so.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. City Attorney.
I'll look to adjourn.
A second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.